Welcome to the August 18th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Council members Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here. The flag salute this evening will be led by Councilmember Friedman and the invocation by Pastor Skip Linderman.
Please place your hand over your heart and join me in saluting our flag.
My flag allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and the United Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Stand for the invocation.
Let us pray. Oh God, we ask your blessing on our meeting this evening. Thank you for letting us be chosen to do the people's business. Help us to be fair and respectful in our listening and in our speaking. Help us to do what is right for all the people. Thank you for letting us live in this lovely city. Help us to be your faithful servants in all that we do, this night and always. Amen.
Amen.
And we have your report.
The agenda for the August 18th, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale City Council was postponed on Thursday, August 13, 2009, on the bulletin board outside City Hall.
What's next, please?
Next is presentation and appointments, and at 3:00 is agenda preview for the meeting of August 25, 2009.
Mr. McCollum.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Next week, we won't be having a specific housing authority or any action items on the housing authority. We do, though, have a joint meeting of the Glendale City Council and the Redevelopment Agency that will be starting at 2:30 with the Director of Development Services presenting a lease agreement between the City Glendale and Glendale Arts for Commercial Space located at 116 West California Avenue. This is on the ground floor of the Orange Street Garage. There is also a Redevelopment Agency meeting at 2:30 where the Director of Development Services will be submitting a report on the designation of a creative media and design district within the San Fernando Road Corridor project area.
We might have, that's the one that has been set back September 2nd, or September 8.
Pardon, Mr. Weaver.
Mayor. On the city council meeting for the 25th, there are a number of action items. The first, the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power with a commission appeal procedures and appeal process before the GWP Commission. Next, the General Manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding the lease of a portion of city-owned property located at 200 East Glen Oaks Boulevard. Next, the City Manager, in fact, the next few will be from the City Manager's office. The first is the consideration of a temporary contract extension with David Church and Associates. This is the federal lobbyist. Next, the City Manager with a Towns and State lobbyist contract report and request. Next, the City Manager will be submitting a sponsorship, a platinum sponsorship request for Path Achieved, the signature event coming up. City Manager then will have a cosponsorship request for Norserant, activities to take place that will be included in the, in the report. And then lastly, the City Manager with a cosponsorship for a bone marrow donor program, DRIF. That would be it.
Okay, thank you. Next? Next, the City Council or staff comments? Mr. Najarian.
Mr. Mayor, I got some good news. I had an email last Friday from our friends at Cal Berkeley, but apparently the word, I think, had gotten to our staff much quicker than that, and that is that we were successful in applying for the Safe Routs to School grant for this cycle. They call it Cycle Eight. The state of California, Caltrans, had allocated $45 million across the state, and Steve, I understand, we, we got our maximum share of $1 million.
Correct. The, the maximum amount you can get is $1 million. There's, we have a, a match that's involved in that, but we, we were notified. It's pending one ministerial approval that's, that needs to go through, but we were notified that we did receive it, yes.
Okay, and that, that's great. I want to congratulate your staff and your grant writers and everyone in the, in the whole city, including council, that has placed an emphasis on pedestrian safety, and we're going in the right direction. And the money doesn't hurt either, so, thank you very much.
Draymond. Mr. Weaver.
Mr. Mayor, as you know, I've been in Aloha land for a couple of weeks, and I was wondering if, while I was gone, have you ever received that information from Barry Al Silverman that you had asked for on the defense fund where they hadn't been paid yet and he was charging a fee for his services and, you know, in the interest of transparency and stuff? You wanted to know all that. Did you ever get it, at least while I was gone?
No, Mr. Weaver, I did not, in spite of, I know we've had a couple of emails asking that same question, but there hasn't been any information from Mr. Allen about the fundraising on the Thompson's behalf, I believe.
Right.
Couple involved.
Or his own nonprofit.
Right. I haven't had any information about that.
So much for transparency.
Problem.
Right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, I will say one other thing.
Mr. Weaver.
This is a warning to anybody at home. Don't ever go in the ocean with your cellphone or your BlackBerry. It's one trip in, one wave, and their history. And I did it, so.
Yes.
It's not the water, it's the fact that it's salt water. It's the salt in the water instantly fries the instruments. I made a mistake.
May I also suggest to my colleague that you add to that, don't get into the tub with a toaster or.
That's a no. Now, that one I know.
FYI.
I know that one. But that cut me off from all contacts with Glendale when it happened, which was not half bad.
Well, that was good. That was a, that was a plus.
Yep.
Well, I think it just shows the power of the Hawaiian Islands.
Ah, yes.
Okay, I don't have anything. However, we do have a, oh.
Just one quick announcement in the absence of Council Comment Regular Leon Mayer. I, I agreed to make a few announcements on his behalf, filling in his shoes. Thursday, August 20th, 7:00 PM, there is going to be a presentation at the Glendale Public Library Auditorium and tell Rude Awakenings of a Jane Austen Addict with Lori Vieira Rigler. Again, that's Thursday, August 20th, 7:00 PM at the Glendale Public Library Auditorium located at 222 East Harvard Street. This is a free event sponsored by the Friends of the Glendale Public Library. And also, on Saturday, August 22, two days later, this Saturday, 6:00 PM, in the Glendale Public Library Auditorium, again, located at East Harvard Street, there'll be a special screening of the movie The Blue Hour by Eric Nazarian. He is the writer-director of this film, The Blue Hour, which is a critically acclaimed movie starring Alyssa Milano, along others, and it's the life of Angelenos along the Los Angeles River. It's a very interesting movie, a small independent movie, and highly recommended. Thank you.
Give us the date again, Mr. Kazakian.
That is August 22, 6:00 PM. That's this Saturday, August 22, at 6:00 PM at the library.
Okay, thank you very much. I have a card from Don Nakamoto. That's a staff, staff comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is Don Nakamoto. I'm the Director of the Verdugo Workforce Investment Board, and we have an important program that's finishing up. It's the Summer Youth Employment Program that was funded with federal stimulus money. We ended up working with about, and employing 250 youth in the community, at-risk youth. And one of the aspects of that program was the Brush Clearance Program that was conducted by the Glendale Youth Alliance. On Wednesday, the 26th of August, at 2:00 PM, the mayor and, and the Congressman Adam Schiff will be conducting a site visit at the, some of the brush clearance sites, and we wanted to invite the council members to attend that as well. We'd also like to thank the council for your past support of this program and also Congressman Schiff's efforts to get the stimulus funding to support this program. I'd like to introduce Karina Gregorian from the Glendale Youth Alliance to talk a little bit about the benefits that the community has enjoyed from this program. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Karina Gregorian. I'm the program supervisor for the Glendale Youth Alliance. As you may know, the Glendale Youth Alliance is a youth employment agency that hires youth between the ages of 14 to 24. We have six programs we operate, and the Summer Youth Employment Program is the backbone of our programs. It serves the largest amount of youth through the year. This summer, we were able to serve 250 youth, 50 of the youth in the Summer Brush Program and 200 youth in other offices, nonprofits, for-profit organizations, actually 77 organizations within the community. The Brush Program has great incentives. Not only are the youth out there, these are the youngest youth, the 14, 15-year-olds. They're out earning money, learning the fundamentals of work ethics, but they're also preventing fires on our public hillsides. This year, we partnered up with the fire department. Some of the fire cadets also served as our team supervisors. So it's definitely a great benefit to the community, and we would love for you to come out and see what the youth have done. I have with me today Nicole Marzuko, who's one of the youth participants in our Brush Program. So you can see her as well as the other youth on August 26. We'd love to have you there. Thank you.
And as I say every year, there's no better organization for cleaning the hillsides. I've had the Glendale Youth Alliance clean my hillside for years and years. They do a tremendous job at a very reasonable price, and, and it's enjoyable watching the kids work and supervising teenagers. That's a thing of beauty, Mr. Weaver.
Question, one for the brush clearing. Is the mayor gonna help clear brush? I'll come and take a picture.
We're gonna put him to work.
I do my own, I do my own hillside. Great, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, next, please.
Next is a consent items following a routine that may be acted upon by one motion. A member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such a request before a motion is proposed.
Mr. Mayor, do you have any cards?
Nope.
Okay, I'd like to move the consent calendar at five.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Next would be oral communications.
Okay, I'm gonna make an exception this evening and allow one of the speakers to speak for three minutes. She has a medical issue that she has to take care of, so I'll move her to the head of the, the line. Tabara Mossefian.
Good evening. I am Tabara Mossefian. I come Glendale City three years. Today, my message, government Arnold Schwarzenegger address. Everybody, no good work. I no understand why no good work. This my landlord, everybody look, she criminal element, but everybody help she take her she. Why? I no understand. Maybe closet Glendale City and all of you go you home. Glendale town in Los Angeles, Los Angeles mayor, rent control tenant look why Glendale City no. You Quintero, number four, mayor city, everybody no work. Why? Police Arnold, you lawyer, question me. I speak and give him all of you fact, no good work. Everybody Glendale City, no good work. I understand, speak, but no understand why you city mayor, you city mayor, you city mayor, I come speak. No, no, no help. Today, my landlord, one bedroom apartment, no air conditioner, no work heater, bathroom Laundry room, no wash machine, no dryer. One month, one hun, one thousand, three hundred dollar, one month rent, yeah? You understand? I don't understand. Police, everybody, maybe Arnold Schwarzenegger, government, help me. No help Glendale City closet and very safe money California.
Okay, thank you. Next, Mr. Kazakian.
Next on the council agenda is adopt unless there's any community announcements or other three-minute announcements under oral communication. Adoption of ordinance, that's 7A's ordinance adding Chapter 13.34 to the Glendale Municipal Code 1995 relating to the prevention and reduction of fats, oils, and greases, also known as FOG, discharges by food service establishments into a municipal sanitary sewer system. This was offered on August 11, 2009 by Councilmember Najarian.
And since you were gone, Mr. Weaver, it doesn't have anything to do with hamburgers, cheeseburgers, or ranch fries.
That's good to know.
Unless you put them down the drain.
Right.
Did eat a cheeseburger in paradise.
I'll move it, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next.
Under action items at 8 on the agenda is 8A City Treasurer regarding City Treasurer's annual investment report. At 8A1 is motion approving and accepting the investment portfolio report for fiscal year ending June 30, 2009, and ordering it filed with the Office of the City Treasurer.
Treasurer settling in.
Mr. Bruckey has a very long PowerPoint presentation.
He's settling into his post. Before we go into the extensive slides, a few remarks on the past year. Trust me on this one. The best thing that can be said about the past fiscal year is that it is finally over. This was not a year of financial highlights. In fact, there were no highlights. It was the year of the great financial meltdown, some say the worst since the Great Depression, spelling ruined for many global business firms. Household names like Bear Stearns and Fannie Mae and Freddie Mac, AIG, Lehman Brothers, Merrill Lynch, Indy Mac, Washington Mutual, and Wachovia either disappeared or were taken over by the government. Other financials survived, but barely. Globally, credit markets dried up and investors sought safe harbor. Interest rates plummeted, jobs disappeared, and the recession took hold of the nation. Yes, a totally forgettable year. For the city portfolio, the best thing that can be said about last year is that we didn't lose any money. Let's take a look at some of the key statistics for the city, for the city portfolio at the end of the year. What we have are three columns matching up the four items of interest, key statistics for the city as of the end of fiscal year ending June of '09, in the middle, June of '08, and fiscal year of '07. Looking at the portfolio, the portfolio was up, $14 million to end at $483 million. It actually puts us right back where we were just two years ago. Some would question why, in such a lousy year. We, we actually had a few things that were coming into play and found, found their way into the portfolio, and that would be some of the bond proceeds of the Glendale Water and Power Bonds that were issued in the Series 208. And then we had the takeout loan, the housing loan from, I think it was Union Bank of 14, 14 mil. That pretty much accounts for the increase in the balances in the portfolio. The real critical item is interest earnings, and interest earnings were down $7 million to end at $12,400,000. A big disappointment, considering that the last couple of years were hovering around $19 million. But the reason for that is looking at the annual rate of return, the third line down, and what we see there is the annual rate of return reflecting the lower interest rate environment, averaged 2.80% for the year, or 137 basis points lower than the previous year. So we effectively went from a 4% interest rate environment for the past two years to one that started us, started off the fiscal year with great expectations and soon deteriorated The fourth line item is the weighted average maturity, and this is in months, and for most of the year, we were hovering around 12 months, just about one year, indicating that our reaction to the low interest rate environment was basically to park money and wait for buying opportunities or interest rates to rise. Towards the last quarter of this year, we turned around and started looking for opportunities at the longer end of the curve that extended our weighted average maturity or the average life of the portfolio from around one year to one and a half. Exhibit B, rate of return comparisons. Let's take a look at the city portfolio, the rate of return of 2.80%. The current year with, or the, the fiscal year ending '09 would be in green. How does the city portfolio compare with maybe a benchmark or other rates that are out there? And there's a lot of public agencies in the state of California that use the local agency investment fund operated by the State Treasurer's Office as either a benchmark or actually leave their money with, with the local agency investment fund. While we were down 137 basis points for the year, LEAF was down 219 basis points, basically cutting their return in half from the prior year to end at 218. That third item is the running rate of the two-year treasuries during the year, the auction rates during the, the year. Those are issued every, every month that treasury goes to market. And the two years started off around 2% and quickly got down to a, a rate where in the month of June, they ended up at 1.11%. What that means is, is if an investor is buying a two-year treasury, they're getting just about 1% on their money. For the year, that return in treasuries was 1.32. We show that there because the city portfolio looks to the running rate of the, of the two-year treasuries as a comparable rate, not so much in the, in what the actual rate is, but the amount of difference from one year to the next. And the treasuries fell 163 basis points from the previous year. Looking at Exhibit C, which would be asset allocation, this is a pie chart comparing the year ending '09 compared with the prior year. It reflects, in, in one regard, compliance with the government code. Looking at the, the different pie wedges and the headings, you can make a quick determination as to the compatibility and the compliance of the investments to the city policy and government code. The categories don't change, that's good. You don't want surprises in the portfolio. Starting at the top, we basically see the same lineup that we had in prior year with federal agency collibles representing 49 and with the federal agency notes representing half of the portfolio. Continuing clockwise, we have the local agency investment fund, the portfolio, it, we have 25% of the portfolio, portfolio in LEAF. We blacked out.
Didn't pay the electric bill, Mr. Weaver.
It was really a bad year. Let's see. We will reconnect in a second. There we go, back to our pie sheets. So like, we, we're at the local agency investment fund representing 25% of the portfolio, corporate notes at 6%, pretty, pretty similar to where we were last year. Commercial paper and bankers' acceptances representing 5% of the portfolio, same as last year. Money market funds moved up from, actually tripled, from 3% of the prior year to 9%. That big piece of cheesecake there is a little heavier than it was for most of the year, only because during the year, that's where we ended up parking the money that we used in the first couple of weeks of July, I think it was July 14, to prepay the pers premium. And that came in at 20, $23 million. So that little, that wedge is gonna be a bit, bit smaller in the next, with the next report. And then we've got negotiable CDs taking up 5% of the portfolio. So on one hand, you can take a look at compliance. On the second hand, looking at this chart, you can also take a look at safety. You've got a, we have a familiarity with the investments. There are no surprises. You're not noting things that are there like asset-backed securities or mortgage-backed Investment maturities. Exhibit D represents liquidity, and looking at, this is our investment portfolio spread out over the, the five-year term. 48% of our portfolio matures within one year. That's $232 million. And if you take year number one with the securities maturing and within the second year, you're up to 62% of the portfolio. That is a very, very liquid portfolio. And if we move over towards Exhibit E, total investments in cash, what we're talking about here is what the city treasurer has responsibility for. The investments in the portfolio of $483 million compared to $469 the prior year, and cash on hand, cash in the bank of roughly 18, $19 million compared to $6 million the prior year. Putting those numbers together, you've got total investments in cash of $502 million. Exhibit F is the Glendale Water and Power Bond Proceeds remaining from the power bonds and water bonds of 2008. Just about $50 million was redeemed or put back into the city funds. We have a remaining, hmm, looks like $25.8 million, which probably will be drawn down during this coming fiscal year. And that pretty much does it for the presentation of the slides. I'd like to close with a few comments looking forward. The economic outlook for the next year looks like a mixed bag. While everyone agrees that there are signs of stabilization or that the recession has bottomed out. bottomed out, there is no real agreement as to when the economy will turn the corner and the recovery will begin, just as there is no real agreement as to when the unemployment picture will improve. There seems to be a building consensus that this recession will see a jobless recovery, meaning that it will be a painfully slow return to economic growth and prosperity. As for the city portfolio, it will be another difficult year, particularly if it is, as Fed Chairman Bernanke recently said, that interest rates will continue to be kept exceptionally low until the job market improves. If so, it could be a long time before short-term interest rates increase enough to have much of a positive impact to our earnings picture. On a positive note, we are pleased that the portfolio is safe, sound, very liquid. We will continue to monitor financial news and markets to take advantage of buying opportunities, and continue our additional vigilance to keep our portfolio safe in these troubling times. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Bruckey. Safe, sound, and earning a reasonable rate of return, I might add. I have one speaker, Herbert Mulano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council. My name is Herbert Mulano. Very often, when the general public looks at the city's reserves and sees numbers such as $483 million, we all get the impression that the city has a significant cushion in case things don't, in case the financial outlook doesn't turn out to be positive. And whenever I see these presentations, we don't get to see the source of those $483 million, as to why are they there? Now, some of us know that when the city borrows money, and let's say there's a temporary place for that money to be until it's spent, and that's with the city treasurer. He mentioned as well that whenever the city's collecting money so that it could pay the pension fund, then it's parked in there as well. And then we also know that there's a percentage of the, that the charter requires from the general fund that it also has to be parked in there. And I was wondering if he's got those numbers, so that we have a better picture as to, you know, what is really there available in case the financial situation in the economy gets worse, if the state of California hits you for a few more million, or in case you need to account differently for the police augmentation fund, or in case you have to change the general fund somewhat, and make it more compliant with regard to the current state of finances. So if, I don't know if he's got it, but I think we ought to know how much of that $483 is there, and the reason why those monies are there. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions for the treasurer?
Mayor, move 8A1.
Do you have a question, Mr. Mayor?
Why, just was, I was, Mr. Bruckey, I was intrigued at some of these rates that we were getting as recent as April. So there's a federal home loan on page three, somewhere in the middle there, April 7th, that we got 3.4% on. See that one? April 7th. Am I reading that correctly?
I see 3%. Is it 3.4?
There's a 3.4.
Are you looking at the June of '08?
April '09.
Oh, I don't have.
Page three, it's under the federal agency callable bonds.
But we're looking at June. I don't have.
April. April '09.
I don't have April of '09. It's end of the year, June numbers that I'm looking at. Was that in your packet?
It's about four entries above the one you're referencing.
Oh, all right. Well, let's see if it's here. It's not on my June report, which tells me that it was called, so it's no longer there.
Callable bonds.
Yeah, that's right here.
You're looking at June 30, '08.
Yeah, I, that's.
This is June 30, '09. You're looking at two different tables. You're looking at June 30, '08. He's referencing June 30, '09.
Oh, hold on a second.
You're ahead by a year of our city treasurer.
Got to be a step ahead of him.
Yeah. So I mean, the general point is.
Go ahead.
I mean, that's a pretty good, that's a pretty good investment at 3.4%. Much better than our currently placed averages. Of course, we're weighted with some ones we made in 2007 that are bringing in 4% and 5%, which are keeping our average investment rate up. But how can it fluctuate so much from one week to the next? One week, we're booking it at 3.4%, the next week at 2%. Same company, same.
No, but what you're, the reason for this 3.4% is because that is a five-year bond. It's the length of time that, the longer the bond goes, the higher the rate. And April.
So the yield curve has.
It works.
Has not, has gone back.
Has not inverted.
Has not inverted.
That's correct.
So we're starting to see greater yields as we go out a little bit.
Well, I don't know greater yields. Let's look at it this way. At two-years, you're looking at 1%. You have to go out three-years to find 2%. You have to go out five-years to find a 3. You found a 3.40, which is probably a callable, probably six-month quarterly. It's not going to tell you that there, but that's what you have. You've got a five-year bond. So that's the reason why it's paying 3.4%. In my remarks, I think I mentioned that in the last quarter, we turned around and started to take some of the money that we were parking, and we bought on the longer end of the curve to find some 3s. That would be one of the purchases.
Okay. I'm all for the council with any further detail. So there was a motion, I'll second this.
Second, yeah. Okay. Roll call, please. Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
At 8B is city treasurer regarding city investment policy for fiscal year 2009, 2010. At B1 is a resolution approving investment policy for city treasurer's investment of city funds.
Weaver, did you have?
I have no questions.
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion at 8B1.
Second.
Changes.
Roll call. Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
What item are we voting on?
Is it 8B1, moved by Councilmember Weaver and seconded by Councilmember.
Investment policy that didn't change.
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Next, please.
At C is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding GWP energy risk management policy. At C1 is a motion approving GWP energy risk management policy.
Okay, after talking to our city attorney, I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion because I own stocks and companies that transport, refine, produce natural gas, so I will not, I'll just recuse myself.
All right. Well, Mr. Mayor, I would like to say that all of us here on this council have an investment in the production of gas. But this is of a different nature.
It is.
Good evening, Mr. Steiger.
Good evening, Councilman Raymond.
Let's see, have we read 8C into the record yet?
Yes, we have.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a brief report?
We do.
We were all briefed.
We do. Approximately a year ago, we initiated the restructuring of our trading organization, and over the last year have implemented a number of new programs within that organization and a number of new initiatives. As such, we've identified the need to update and revise our energy risk management policy. And to give you a little bit more detail, I'd like to introduce our Assistant General Manager of Power Supply, Steve Linz.
Mr. Mayor, is that here, councilmembers? Steve Linz, Assistant General Manager of Supply. We are here with an update to our energy risk management policy, as Mr. Steiger mentioned. Recently, we completed our strategic plan, and one of the primary focuses of that plan were on energy trading. As part of that focus, we've hired ACES Power Marketing to help us with real-time marketing, the Energy Authority to help us with our price stabilization program, and Risk Management Institute to basically act as our in-house risk manager until we're able to hire someone in-house. Once we had them on board, we realized it was time to update our policy that was last adopted by this council in '03. We got the consultants and staff together and made that update. Some of the highlights include adding a city manager representative to the Risk Management Committee, adding more specific controls over some of the trade limits, and adding some new commodities in areas that we stopped dealing with because of the crisis in 2000. Areas like the ISO now are ripe for exploration of our trading group to see if there's some opportunities to sell excess capacity when we have it available. We've also added some commodities like coal, gasoline, and diesel, emissions credits, and renewable energy certificates. We're not currently trading or doing anything related to coal or gas. We think there's an opportunity there, potentially in the future, to maybe hedge the whole city's fleet gasoline, and we'll be working with Steve Zern on that. So when we do that, that'll come through the Risk Management Policy Committee, and that's an overview of the highlights. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but we're asking that you adopt the updated policy this evening.
All right, let me first see if there's any comments or questions from the council. Mr. Weaver?
I think we were all briefed on this thoroughly today individually, on it for at least 30 minutes, so we have a fairly good feel for it. But with that, I'd like to move 8C1.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Let me also ask Mr. Kasak, are there any cards on the side?
Not on this particular.
There are no. Don't think there are any here. If there's no other question or comment, then let's call the roll.
Councilmembers, Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Protem, Quintero has recused himself. Mayor Quintero has, and Mayor Protem, Raymond?
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, we're at 8D.
Could you read 8D into the record?
Yes, I will. At 8D is general manager of Glendale Water and Power regarding award of contract to Beta Engineering LLC to furnish all engineering labor, equipment, and materials for the demolition of the existing Glorieta substation and design build a new substation. At D1 is motion approving and accepting the proposal in an amount not to exceed $13,138,400, including contingency and authorizing city manager to enter into a contract with Beta Engineering LLC.
Good God.
Mr. Steiger?
He said, "No power points."
Mayor Quintero, members of the Glendale City Council. A number of months ago, we brought to you the concept of the rebuilding of the existing Glorieta substation. Tonight, we come back to you for approval for awarding the design and construction of that substation, and I'd like to turn this over to Ramona Buig, our Assistant General Manager of Electric Services, for just a brief overview of the substation.
Really appears to be an architecturally significant substation.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council. Ramona Buig, Assistant General Manager for Glendale Water and Power. Back in January, we came to the council for approval to send out a pre-bid qualification to, for the design build of Glorieta Substation. Back in April, we came back to you with an actual RFP with four pre-qualified bidders for building, rebuilding the substation. Again, Glorieta Substation is an existing substation built sometime in the '60s. It's a 4KV system, and we need to upgrade that to 12,000 volts, and also increase the capacity of the substation to allow for any growth that we have. The main purpose of Glorieta Substation is to match the service voltages that we have in the area to increase the reliability and efficiency in northern Glendale. And just to give you, this is our PowerPoint, as much as we know you love PowerPoint, that's where we're going with this system. You're going to hear me?
No. I'll use the mic.
We got to hear you.
This is the existing substations that looks now. This is what we call an air-insulated system substation. The C, what you see here is what we call the ERA rated at 34,000 volts below the transformers that transform the voltage from 34,000 to 4,000 volts. What we're trying to do is to increase the capacity of the substation inside the same footprint without taking up any more land. So just conceptually, we were going to use a gas-insulated system and had the electrical engineers design this substation. This is what it would look like to the neighbors, basically lowering the substation so that all the electrical infrastructure will be behind the wall. And the value of hiring consultant through design engineers, not electrical engineers, is we're going to try and match that with the environment so that it would look so much better, and so that it doesn't look, it doesn't have that industrial look. I mean, this is just a conceptual design, not quite the final design yet, but we have been working with the planning department and the parks and recreations department so that the product that we come up with will be compatible with the community. Additionally, back in March of 2009, we did have a community meeting presenting the concept to the neighborhood, and we did not, and actually, we got a lot of compliments about the projects that we're trying to achieve. So with that, I'll take any questions?
Very attractive, all kidding aside, really, that's a very good idea. Looks very nice, Mr. Robert.
Ramon, you touched on it, but to emphasize, it's been suggested by a resident that the gas insulated as opposed to the traditional, what you call air insulated, which means separating everything on the big metal racks to put enough distance between them using air. What would, how large, if we use the air insulated, would the proposed substation be if we didn't use GIS?
If we didn't use GIS, we cannot do this project at this site.
Doesn't fit.
It doesn't fit. What we'll need is at least double the size, or find another location, which I will not go into, because the only other location is the New York Substation, and that's not a winning proposition. Again, what we're trying to do here is build a system that would last us for the next 20, 30 years, we won't have to touch this again.
Mr. Friedman?
I know that that's a conceptual design. I'm going to suggest that the designer maybe get together with our urban planners to get some feedback from them, because.
Absolutely. That's, we built into our schedule possibly going to the design review board with us.
I don't think it's a bad idea. That way, the neighbors will have a chance to give you input in a public place, and you'll have the benefit of the people on that board to also give you some input.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Comments?
I would just say that it seems that this is where we first met, Mr. Buig, on the other end of this very issue some time ago. And I'm very happy that technology has advanced in a way that this could happen and make two locations, actually, better looking. So this one and the one on Altura. So thank you.
I mean, the people, the New York Avenue residents didn't like this concept, Altura?
No, it's that there's a giant hole in the ground where they were planning to, they had just taken out a power substation, they were planning to put it back in.
I'll move 8D1.
And a second?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Thank you very much.
At E is City Attorney regarding discussion of local election campaign reform issues generally and since April 2009. At E1 is ordinance for introduction, remending GMC 1995 Section 1.10.030 related to post-election contributions in local election campaigns. At E2 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Okay, Mr. Howard.
Mr. Howard, provide the report. Mr. Mayor, members of council, just in summary, council members Friedman and Weaver requested that we bring back a report particularly focused on the issue of the tension between two of these sections involved in our recently enacted campaign contribution ordinance. That provision that related to the requirement that after or post-election contributions are only to be used for the payment of debt. That is one section. The other section with which that creates tension is the section that permits the continued seeking of contributions up to a maximum of $10,000 to be either excess funds if you're a successful candidate or to be surplus funds if someone was an unsuccessful candidate. Because of the tension created in those two sections and some possible scenarios, as I outlined in the report, I've brought before you an ordinance for your consideration that would make it very clear that the post-election contributions and solicitation for contributions that would occur from essentially April till the end of August of an election year can be used for the payment of debt or to apply to the maximum cap of $10,000 for excess funds or surplus funds. This would not change the requirements, the maximum contribution limit per person or on aggregate. It would still maintain all of the other limits set forth in the current campaign contribution ordinance. In addition, while the report is primarily focused on that, I've provided some language and I provided the copy of the former report to give you the opportunity, should you desire to do so now, to discuss other potential issues and changes to the campaign financing ordinance. I referred to it earlier as contribution, but it's not just limited strictly to that. The campaign finance ordinance, should you believe that there are other changes that may be necessary or amendments that you would like to discuss and provide direction on. And finally, the report just notes that we are tracking and will continue to track any cases or any other legislation for that matter, but primarily cases that may be decided by the courts that could have an impact on our current ordinance and likewise could have an impact on areas well not regulated by us, might be something that could be on the radar screen for future regulation. So with that, I'm pleased to answer any questions that you might have and provide you with any additional information.
Are there any questions?
Let me just understand the status quo, Mr. Howard, as you indicated. During an election cycle, at the conclusion of the election, should a candidate have a surplus of funds, let's say a successful candidate have a surplus of funds, he or she may maintain those funds up to $10,000.
Yes.
And maintain those funds in his office holder's account.
Yes. Here, we don't call it an office holder's account, but essentially, that's what it is, yes.
At the conclusion of the election, if the candidate, successful candidate finds himself or herself to be in arrears, in debt, he or she may solicit funds up to $10,000 to cover that debt.
Only, and that's the problem, that's the tension. Right now, the one section provides that you can only raise funds post-election for the payment of debt exclusively.
Okay.
So if you were unluckily enough to, say, amass an excessive amount of funds prior to conclusion of the election, you would then be seeking contributions only to pay off debt, and you may not have enough, you may not have essentially excess funds, which, under state law, which essentially we follow, could be used for any governmental, political, legislative purpose, which may actually assist the taxpayers because you may use those funds to attend a conference, for example, that the taxpayers might be legitimately picking up the tab for.
But if the candidate finds himself more than $10,000 in debt, are there any restrictions on him soliciting funds?
No. No, you can raise all the funds you need between the end of the election and August 31st to pay off debt.
Let's say the candidate is a few hundred dollars in debt, holds a big bash. What do you know, I got $10,000 in the account. Is that...
Donate it.
I mean, does that violate the spirit of the law there?
One could argue it does, and my research has revealed that, one, based on the principles of statutory construction, we need to harmonize these sections so they all work together and make sense. One way of doing that would, and as I note in the report, would allow the big bash, so to speak, to pay off debt, but you raise more money than you need. It would, in one hand, the argument is, well, you can only raise it to pay off debt, so you either have to return it on a pro rata basis or turn it over to a charitable organization. The better argument, in my view, is that because you have this other section that allows you to raise funds up to $10,000 in excess funds, that you'd be able to keep the remaining amount. But it would require, as I noted, a somewhat in-depth factual probe to determine, was it really your intent in holding this big bash to pay off a few hundred dollars in debt? Or was it your intent really to try to collect monies to hold in an office holder account? And that's why what I brought before you would clear up that, and I'm calling it tension, but that somewhat potential conflict between those sections. And not having to stretch to half to find an interpretation that makes everything work while the same time putting one at risk by having to engage in this factual probe to determine, was it your true intent to collect money just to pay down a debt or was your true intent really to try to build up an office holder account?
And so do you have a recommendation?
Well, personally, because that tension is there, my recommendation is that if it's a desire of this council to have these excess funds, which apparently it was when the ordinance was adopted, to strongly consider the ordinance. Because this ordinance then would remove any doubt of the ability to continue to raise funds after the election up to August 31st for either or both, up to $10,000 to pay off debt and to keep whatever remaining funds in an office holder's account. And I should point out, for those that may suspect, that one of the purposes of raising those funds is to be able to use your next campaign. It's limited by state law that you can't. You can use it for government, there are things you can do with it, and I've actually had some memos, produced some memos on that. But one of them is you can't just amass the funds to be able to roll it over and use in your next campaign.
Mr. Friedman.
If by state law we're limited in keeping that money to, you know, amass money, as you said, for the next election, then what's the justification to limiting the fundraising to the end of August?
It was a period of time so that it just wouldn't be continuous fundraising. Certainly, this council is free to extend it. It was a period of time when we brought the multiple reports before you, we had these time limits and the election cycles and these time limits in there. And I don't recall specifically if a council member wanted to keep that time limited to six months. I did notice in a number of cities that I reviewed that it was 180-day period for collecting funds for the payment of debt or just collecting funds for any purpose. But the limit was about 180 days and some shorter. I think some cities were no time.
Do some cities have separate accounts that are separate from a campaign account that would be more of an office holder's account?
Actually, I believe the city of Los Angeles has what is called office holder accounts, specifically spelled out in their campaign finance ordinance, and other cities do as well.
Because maybe that's what's causing some confusion. And the reason that I asked, just to be transparent, the reason that I asked for this to be agendized is because I finished this election with debt, which we were able to raise money for, and we retired. We didn't raise any additional money, so we're going into this next four years with zero money in our account, which is not a problem for the next campaign cycle. But what I've discovered in my four months in office is that it is a problem in terms of just functioning as a city council member, because there are a lot of events that we're invited to that we're sort of expected to go to by members of the public, a lot of charitable events, fundraisers, that sort of thing. And in lieu of having money in an account for that, we're sort of expected, as council members, to use our own personal money. There's no money from the city for that. The city doesn't pay for these events typically. And so we're in the awkward position of either not going to events that the public would like us to attend or using our money, which, you know, some of us don't have the means to because it really, you know, honestly adds up. So it's interesting that other cities do allow you to have an office holder's account or to raise money, election money, that you can use for the purpose of attending a lot of these public events. And that's why I asked for this to be agendized. And so maybe part of the solution would be to separate out money that you're raising for the next campaign and money that you're raising to allow us to raise a certain amount of money throughout the four years that we can use for an office holder's account. And I don't know. That's why I'm asking what other cities do and whether that would serve this need.
Well, it would help from the standpoint, if you had that officer account and you were asking for money from the public, they would know what you're asking it for, that it's separate from the campaign. Because what brought this on, I think, is we had one individual council member that raised $20,000, $30,000, two years into the four-year cycle. What are you doing out there raising thousands and thousands of dollars midstream? I think that played partly into why we put the August deadline in or whatever on it.
And as you said, there are events. For instance, there's an organization that I was invited to join, which is a women in politics group that a lot of very powerful women politicians, and it's a networking group, and I would love to join this, and it's about $300 a year, and it's something that I would love to be able to raise money to do. I would never ask the city to do it, and yet I think that it's something that would serve a public good. So there's associations like that. There are conferences, as you said, educational opportunities, and I think that there's a public benefit to allowing us to raise money for these sorts of uses.
Any other opinions on, Mr. Howard?
I would like the opportunity to look into that for a couple of reasons. One, at least using the state as a model, the funds that are left over after an election campaign are considered excess funds, and they are allowed to be used for governmental, legislative, or political purposes. And the FPPC has dozens of opinions on where they draw the line on some of those, and if there's a direct personal benefit, then you have to have a direct relationship as opposed to just a relationship with a governmental, legislative, or political purposes. The cities that have office holder accounts, I'm not certain that they actually deviate much from that type of program. I'd have to check to determine if they allow you just to continue to raise funds for an office holder account as opposed to treating excess funds that have been raised in the election cycle as an office holder account. So I'd want the opportunity to check that to make sure that it's something that is sanctionable. And again, whether we're looking at raising funds that are excess to the campaign or going out and specifically raising funds for an office holder account to provide an opportunity to attend things that make sense in terms of the public good.
The reason that I'm bringing that up is because if we were to adopt your recommendation for a modification of this ordinance, we're almost at the end of August now. So that would mean that in practicality, we probably wouldn't be able to raise money for this next four years.
Unless you wanted to change the date from August 31st of the same year to, say, October.
Okay, and that's an option.
That's something you could do today. And what I presented to you was a fairly straightforward approach to trying to address the issue without going into the whole notion of stretching it out two more years or having a separate office holder's account for which you can just raise funds for. And that's what I'd want to check, frankly, if that's something that either other cities actually allow and what the state has said and what the courts have actually said. That's not something I've looked at.
Mr. Howard, this is an ordinance for introduction, meaning we're not going to act on it for another week or so. You have time during then to, I know, I know, how complicated this is, make the analysis or should we act on this and then agendize later if there is another way to handle it?
My suggestion would be, and again, I have staff on, and I have three staff members on vacation this week, and so basically, you're looking at them right now. I'm not certain I can have it done and completed on the agenda for next week.
I meant the research enough to tell you, yeah, there's something there, but it's going to take staff time to put it together for your consideration.
The answer is probably, but my recommendation would be if we're just trying to deal with the concern now, perhaps look at considering changing the August 31st date and pushing it 60 or 90 days out. And then we can have the time to put something together and bring you back a report on the whole notion of a separate office holder's account and time limits and the propriety of raising funds strictly for that.
Does that come under E2 then, requesting the staff to change it to 6090?
Actually, we can do that right now. It's subsection, Section 1.10.030E is where the amendment is, which indicates contributions made or received on the day immediately after an election, to and including August 31st. If the desire was to introduce the changing that date to just a date that makes sense to you, at least in the short run, we could do that now.
I'm okay with that. Okay, so am I.
And it would be striking the debt part.
Actually, what it does is it provides that it shall only be used for the payment of debts set forth under 110090 or as surplus or excess funds pursuant to Section 11080, which is the provision that provides for the $10,000 cap. It just references the other section.
Mr. Najarian?
The things that I'm concerned about, in Mr. Friedman's examples, sounds perfectly legitimate and beyond question. But I think, as Mr. Weaver said, there were instances where, in the past, for an extended period of time, unrelated to an impending campaign or impending election, council people were soliciting funds. And more likely than not, projects from those donors were coming before the council sooner or later. I think when we passed this ordinance back whenever, the idea was to take the money out of the office of city council as much as we could. The other problem is that these office holder accounts certainly are still ripe for abuse. I know the example of, who was the previous speaker? Was it?
Esther.
No, the Speaker of California Assembly on his office holder accounts toured the south of France, drinking wine. So, I mean, I guess the point is that...
Come on, delay.
That it's still a, it's maybe more insidious for money to be placed in that account because it's directly accessible by the candidate for purposes very broadly related to holding office. So I'm very cautious about things like that happening.
We could structure it.
I think perhaps one way to deal with that is require appropriate reports. Under state law, you've got, right now, we're just tracking state law. And so if those funds are improperly used, that's something that can be, a complaint, one, can be filed with the FPPC, and, two, the government code specifically prohibits the use of those funds, and I'm kind of breaking this into two parts. One, it prohibits the use of those funds for your next campaign. You can transfer that money to another candidate, but you can't use it for your own campaign.
Mr. Drayman?
I mean, Ms. Friedman and Mr. Drayman.
Well, and that's part of the question, Mr. Howard, and let me orchestrate off of Councilmember Najarian's comments. If you have a council member who is raising funds, you know, and it is presumably to use for the purpose of, well, some of the things that Councilmember Friedman mentions, we have had a council member who is raising funds, and it's not technically for a campaign, but it's absolutely electioneering and they're doling them out as though it is out of his pocket for all sorts of charities and charitable groups that are parading themselves before council and at the dais, you know, $2,500 at a time, $1,200 at a time, $800 at a time, trying to give the impression that it is out of his pocket when in fact it's out of that account. And those funds are being used, in my view, aside from it being a little bit crass, I also view it as being electioneering.
Well, and that's why, you know, I agree with you. That's why the $10,000 limit, I think, that's why we went with that original number. That's just about enough to pay all the parking, like Ms. Friedman says, to pay all the different events and so forth in a four-year period. Actually, I don't think it's going to cover a four-year period, but whatever. However, in terms of the time, I think an extra 90 days would be a good idea. Mr. Friedman.
I understand your concerns, and there is another solution. I don't think anyone would like it. I don't know if any, think anyone would like it. The other solution would be to really take the money out of the equation and have the city pay for more of those sorts of events directly, so that the city decides what's the correct use, and that it's not up to individual council members to go to members of the public who may or may not have an interest in, in city business, and to just make a policy that these are expenses that we shouldn't have council members have to pay for out of their own pocket, or to make a policy that council members shouldn't be expected to go to these events.
Set guidelines.
I like that, but obviously, it has a financial impact, which may be distasteful, especially in this environment, financial environment.
I mean, it comes down a little bit to the question of whether serving in public office should also mean that you're willing to take a big financial hit.
It's a vow of poverty.
A vow of poverty, and not just because a lot of us take pay cuts to do this, but then because we're expected to go out of pocket while we take a pay cut. And I hate to bring it up, especially in this economy, but I think, you know, one or the other has to give. Either we don't go to a lot of these events, or we're in the awkward position, as I find myself being, of having to ask to be comped to these events, which, when it's a charity fundraiser, I find tacky, and I don't like to have to do it. And yet, I don't have, there's no money put aside from any account fund to pay for it. So, I feel that I'm personally in a bind.
Mr. Weaver.
Now, that's what I do, I pay my own way, I obviously have. If I want to, or I decline a lot, so I just can't afford to be going to these, because nothing is under seventy-five hundred dollars a pop. You take your wife, now you're spending maybe two hundred dollars. It gets pretty expensive. But the other thing I want to talk about, this extension of the date, we could do that because we're just acting on this now, but a year from now, it asks staff to bring it back and set it back to August again. This is just to get us through this timeframe.
While we work out
While we're working it out.
Any changes to the ordinance.
Then tell staff, oh, must have now come back again, let us adjust it, the ordinance back to August.
But I am worried about your concerns, so I don't, do you have any suggestions?
Sure, if we sit down and think and talk about it, we can find
We can direct staff to take a look.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, all good points, and certainly, the second motion, which is to direct staff, we can come back and we can assess all of those potential issues and problems that, where there's some concern that the money may be misused and the like, and how it may appear, whether actual or perception of how that money is potentially being used. I should point out, there still are other protections within the ordinance, one of which is the inability, supposed to take contribution from anyone with a quote-unquote "application pending," or someone with a contract with the city. So, and again, some work I think we, as staff, still have to do to get the word out on that, make sure those who
That's already in the ordinance.
That's already in the ordinance, yes, sir. At least for, the application pending is a ninety-day limit, the contract is twenty-five thousand dollar, or it's worth more than twenty-five thousand dollars. That's already there. But certainly, it's feasible to extend the time now, because you were kind of stuck with this tension between the two terms, and then come back and, or we can sunset it, I can come back next week, actually, and modify the language to note that that provision sunsets in three hundred and sixty-five days.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, I am, I'm comfortable with the idea, Mr. Mayor, of extending the date out until, until we can have the city attorneys bring us back language that we can actually debate.
November 30th would be a ninety-day extension.
And is that also modifying it so that it's not just for the debt?
That language is, it's on page two of the proposed ordinance, it's underlined.
Question.
So, you can continue to raise money through, if this were adopted, through November 30th for the payment of debt, or as surplus or excess funds.
If we're thinking about a, if we're thinking about a office holder's account, how about the other two council members who are off-cycle? Aren't they entitled to a, because you can't collect, you can't solicit money now.
Well, there was
So, we should expand it
One of these accounts that are applied off by council members.
We'll have to equalize.
That'll be part of, that'll be part of
We don't want to be the rich council members, and
After paying their way to all these funds.
I'll invite you to the relaive for life.
Another discussion for another day. I mean, I'll be glad to introduce the ordinance for that.
Let's think about that.
But I think that points out the need to probably try to bring something back a little bit sooner, rather than later, to address some of these points and issues.
The ordinance itself.
Let's try and be equal, and
Ninety days.
That would be, just to have a specific date, November 30th.
The question, we're talking about extending that date out
Yes, sir.
Not to satisfy debt.
Right, it's, well, it's to satisfy debt, or as surplus or excess funds pursuant to the other section within the Code and the State Political Reform Act. So, assume that you have, that particular section was designed for the payment of debt, where it had that date limit. So, that date limit now is extending out, I haven't changed the language where, so you can continue to seek contributions to
Status quo.
To pay off debt, but you could also, it would also go beyond the debt, up to the maximum ceiling of ten thousand dollars as excess funds.
And that buys us ninety days for you to come back, if we want a further discussion.
Not so much buying me ninety days, but it gives those who kind of got stuck within this, this hundred-and-eighty-day period between April and the end of August, who may have been just raising money, who got, didn't amass funds, and had only enough money, basically, to pay for their campaign, and then realized, I need to raise money to pay off debt. And then, all they can do is raise money to pay off debt, arguably, with the exception of going into this deep factual probe of your intent, couldn't raise any money to have excess funds.
I introduce the ordinance.
Okay. There is a speaker
With the charge.
Been introduced. There's a speaker. No.
Ms. Hammond. It's on the following item. Is it on AD?
E. Looks like an F.
Oh, it looks like an F, but yeah, you're right, it's AD.
I would recommend that before the speaker come up, Mr. Weaver withdraw the introduction, allow the speaker
Okay, I'll withdraw the introduction.
You want me to wait?
No.
All right. I think it's a great idea, and I want to congratulate the members of the city council for working on this, and of course, our city attorney. I think it's great. And people, we sometimes forget that you guys work for a lot of money, right? I'm being funny there. What I mean is that we don't take into account all the hours that you spend doing social things in the city, going to various things, such as National Night Out, running from one place to the other, and so forth, and going to all these events. Some of them may be very boring. I would find a lot of them very boring, and wouldn't probably go. But at any rate, I do want to congratulate you. And again, I think we ought to remember that you're here because we voted for you, and we have faith in you that you're going to do what's right, and that's what you're trying to do. I'm really happy with what's going on, with this ordinance being brought up and passed. The other thing I would like to bring up, and it's the fact that we did not have a meeting relating to the after-hours voting that was done in the last election. There was one meeting, and we were to have another meeting, and we never did have it, never heard any more about it, and why not? There was to be one, as you recall. I brought it up right here at city council. Again, though, I want to thank you for trying to do what's right. I really do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, reintroduce the ordinance.
Okay.
I know I'd asked too for a post-election report.
Mr. Starber, do you know anything about a post-election report, or what the speaker's referring to?
Well, we don't have one scheduled. We did do a post-election review by internal audit, which we can certainly provide for you.
There's a lot of questions raised during the election. At least, I got feedback. And you know, all hearsay rumors, who knows what the truth is.
I think some of those you may want to direct to the city clerk. From a procedural standpoint, we had internal audit look at the handling and the processing, but I'm not, but frankly, they didn't address some of the issues that I think you're referring to.
That doesn't get to the public, unless we put it on here, so the public hears it. I'm not the one raising the concerns, that's what I heard.
I'd be happy to respond or answer any questions, if anyone has any. We actually did hold one town hall. There was an offer made to have some of the candidates ask further questions of some of the staff that worked on the election, more specifically, temporary staff that was hired on, like previous city clerk Doris Reed. But, you know, we haven't heard anything from any of the candidates, successful or unsuccessful to that effect. You're more than welcome to, I'm sure, email her or contact her, Ms. Hammond, we'll be happy to put you in touch with her. But at that town hall meeting, Mr. Mayor and council, we had myself, city attorney, and other city staff available to answer any questions.
Well, I wasn't there, and I was just expecting a report to be put on. There was a lot of rumors circulating at the time. Whatever the will the council is. You brought it up, Margaret, I had forgot.
All right, next, please.
Just before, Mr. Mayor, on the second component of that item, the motion directing staff, I've got direction now on the whole issue of office holder accounts, and the equalization and the whole number of issues that many of you raised. I don't know, and I just wanted to make sure I covered the base of whether or not there were any other issues relating to campaign finance that you wanted us to take a look at. I did make the report broad enough, at least, for you to have that opportunity to do so. As I did note in the report, we received, I think, a couple of inquiries, I wouldn't even call them complaints, that were somewhat routine. It went pretty smooth, given that this was the first, the first rollout of a campaign finance regulatory system within, for local city elections, and it went fairly well. But if there are any other issues that you observed, or you have interest in, certainly, provide me with direction, I'd be happy to come back. And if you, you may think of some in the future as well, so, as things develop, but this was, I wanted to make sure I threw that opportunity out tonight.
Okay, thank you. Next.
The motion was, actually, ordinance was introduced. At AF is a city attorney regarding discussion of the process for appointment of individuals to boards and commissions, and the terms of office of appointed board and commission members. At F1 is a motion providing direction to staff.
Mr. Howard, again.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of council, very quickly, this was requested by Councilmember Drayman, I believe, concurred in by a number of council members, that you have the opportunity to consider possibly some options, one of which was pointed out, and that is the, what we did with the design review boards, a number of months ago, six months or so ago, in having board members, members of boards and commissions' terms be co-terminous with city council. Having the process that we currently have for the nomination and then appointment of boards and commission members remain the same, but look at making, of aligning their terms to be co-terminous with the four-year terms of city council members. We have included in the report additional potential options for your consideration, should you desire to do that. But I, as I recall, and the exhibits reflect that as well, this council had the opportunity, and it went fairly smoothly, of adjusting the terms and making the design review boards' member, giving them four-year terms, and having them, having their terms expire co-terminous with the terms of the council members. I should point out that of all the remaining boards and commissions, with the exception of civil service, which is essentially a charter-created commission, the commissions are generally five-member commissions. You have two that are seven-member commissions, and I wanted to point that out, because this would be an opportunity, if you would choose to adjust those commissions to reflect a, what I would be somewhat, I guess, consider a standard number on a commission in Glendale, which is five members. Those are, both two commissions, both the Commission on the Status of Women and Arts and Culture have seven members. This would be an opportunity for you to change that, should you desire to do so. But otherwise, this is, the main purpose of this is to provide direction to staff, so that we can fairly quickly come back with an ordinance, and I'm targeted, if the council gives us direction, again, if it's not too complex, I think we can have it back within two weeks, for an ordinance that could restructure the appointment process for members of boards and commissions, the remaining, what I'll call Title II boards and commissions. I'll be pleased to answer any questions and provide additional information, should you desire it.
Okay, any questions or comments?
Well, I think, I think it's worked pretty well, and I think the idea of having some accountability for the actions, decisions, both on the dais and off the dais of the commissioners, is a good idea. With regard to the two commissions that have seven members, I think the status of women has a, they've got a student member
It's seven plus two.
And a, oh, it's seven plus two.
Yes, seven plus two. The two, the two are ex officio students. Ex officio student members.
Voting, or are they voting members?
They're ex officio, so they don't vote.
They don't vote. Okay, well, then, I think we should, I did receive an email from the chairperson of that commission, who said that she, I think, speaking on her own behalf, did not have any objections to trimming that commission from seven to five. I think we should probably do the same with the Arts and Culture Commission, although they also have ex officio, don't they? Is there
I don't believe they do. I think the reason they have seven is because they have very specific criteria. One has to be a member of the school, not the school district, but a, an educational institution. They have some very specific criteria for two of those members.
Well, Design Review Board also has specific criteria, and they have five.
Yes, correct. So, the standard in Glendale, again, just looking at all the commissions, is five.
But it could be reduced through attrition, rather than
Mr. Drayman.
Pick this person, that person.
Well, I support this. This is part two of what, what we talked about some time ago, when we were working on design review reform, and part of that was how, how we are appointing our board members and commission members. We heard a lot of discussion at that time. Some of it was that the sky was going to fall, that we were putting our people on there. I think it's important to remember, we're not appointing these people, we're individually nominating them. The entire council vets those nominations and votes, up or down. If you recall, the reason we did that was because, prior to that, we had two-person nominating panels, and we had a variety of issues that were springing up. We had issues where two council members just couldn't see eye to eye. We had that issue come up. We had issues where, and the primary reason is the public was saying, who is nominating these, these board and commission members? And the sad fact was, as council members, it's hard for us to keep track, too. It gets very confusing. The idea is not so much transparency, as much as accountability, and there is a slight distinction. It's not just whether or not you can discern what's going on, but it's the accountability that, that we nominate someone, and just as the council members are elected advocates of the public, that, that are in a performance business, so too are our board and commission members. If they are, if their behavior is exemplary, if they perform their tasks in an exemplary fashion, we know it, we hear it from our constituents, the public. If they are doing less than that, we also hear it. I can tell you, having nominated someone to a board, it came to my attention from city staff, that that individual had not filled out a form they were supposed to have filled out. No problem, they knew who to come to, picked up the phone, called that commissioner and said, hey, you know what, you need to take care of this, and they did. That is, that's part of the benefit of it. The idea, I received one email that was kind of curious, Mr. Mayor, it was saying, if we do this, then we're like lords and kings and princes, appointing people who are our men on the boards and commissions, our men and women. Again, we're not appointing them, we're nominating them as individuals, and the entire council vets them. And by the way, it was Mr. Weaver's suggestion at the time, we don't just nominate them, we also consult with the city department head that is most closely associated with the job they are, that board and commission member is carrying out. So, for example, if it's a design review board, we would be talking to Mr. Higani. If it is, say, GWP commission, we'd be talking to perhaps Mr. Steiger. But in any case, the check and balance is that the whole council vets the nomination and votes on it. I support this in terms of the terms syncing up with the terms of the council, because how in the world how in the world does the nominee become accountable when the nominee, I mean, the nominator, the city council member, become accountable when that city council member is no longer on the council? We have, we had a situation where there were people on the council who are on boards and commissions who were appointed by council members who haven't served in four years or more. So in any case, and there was a concern about institutional memory of these things needing to be staggered. Well, they are, because the city council terms are staggered. So, anyway, I, I'm prepared to support this.
I think it is an excellent idea, and an idea that I've been interested in pushing for at least eight years, and I've been on the council, because I think the nominations are going to reflect the individual council members. And that's been one of my problems in the past, when people would come up to me and talk about a certain board member that may have done whatever it is that the board member did. What did I have to do with it? I did vote for the person, but if you didn't vote for someone else's nominee, then they wouldn't vote for yours. So it was a very convoluted system, and I didn't like it. I think it got out of hand. There were, as the cycles continued, you'd have some council members that would appoint multiple people to certain boards, and it was just a mess. So I think we've done the right thing with the VRB, and I think it's time to move forward with the other boards and commissions. And as you nominate people, the voters will know who you nominated, and that person's performance on the board or commission will directly reflect you. You nominated the person, so, anyway, that's my, that's my feel on it. Mr. Weaver?
Well, in my own opinion, colleagues don't have to agree with me, certainly. I've been appointing for 13 years now, so I've seen, I've seen it all. And it doesn't matter what we do, there will be some that will criticize us for doing what we do. Is there a perfect system? No, there is not. I've sat here and watched people appointed to boards and commissions that absolutely should never have been appointed to board and commission, in my opinion. And I know more than one time I have voted, sat here and voted against an appointment. In my own opinion, again, it's very difficult, once a council member has nominated an individual, for other council members to sit here, stand up and say, no, I don't agree with your nomination. Ninety-nine, nine-tenths of the time, you're going to give that person a shot, if the council member nominates him. So, yeah, while a council member nominates, council points, it's human nature to go with the council and give that individual a chance. I just had enough guts a couple times to vote no, because I thought the person involved just should not serve, didn't have the qualifications. If you pick somebody in a, in a profession that is totally unrelated, like Designer Review Board, and we've seen those in the past, sitting here, what the heck do they know about design? I remember one individual, Sir Don Designer View, no offense, an attorney, and I watched her at the meetings, got up and say, what's that line? And there's a professional architect standing there, trying to answer what that line is, and what about that line? And that is an insult to the applicant, to the architect, the engineer, whoever's presenting. And that's just one example. That's why I gravitate to pulling in the department head, and sometimes asking the department head, who, what's the best fit? Like in Water and Power, you want diversity. You have water, and you have power. You need somebody with water experience, somebody with power experience, you need legal experience. You need that diversity. So the value in having a department head in there, not only looking for resumes, but also saying, well, this would be the best fit for my commission at the time. So there's value in it, no matter how we do it. Nothing is perfect. We can try this on. I think we've changed this process at least three times in my 13 years. So whatever you all want to do, let's give it a try.
Thank you. I have one card, Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Well, I think this, this whole concept has been long in coming, and I think it will be welcome to a lot of people who have been watching carefully the various different commissions. I know that when Councilman Draymond was running for office, this was one of the topics that he talked a lot about, and I agreed with that concept. You know, you run for office with a certain objectives, a vision of what you want to have for the city, and not to have the option to at least put that vision into place, at least for those commissions that are going to impart your objectives. These people, to some extent, become your alter ego, and it'll be significant for you to be able to at least, you know, lead that process of putting the right people in the right seats. You know, there's that old expression, who you get on the bus? The, I've, in my experience, since I do attend these commissions and pay a lot of attention, there've been some very, very sad situations out there. Mr. Weaver selected some really good people to the Audit Committee and Glendale Water and Power, that's just been terrific, incredible individuals, very competent. You know, they do a lot of due diligence, they do their homework, they come in prepared. Unfortunately, that's not the case for a lot of other individuals who come out there. A couple of years ago, the Transportation and Parking Commission had to cancel more than 50% of their meetings. Incredible, because they could not get a quorum going. There were not individuals who were really interested in really pursuing or taking on those particular issues concerning, you know, the traffic problems that we find in the city. Sometimes the individuals who come in there truly come in unprepared. And even though they may work for another entity in another city similar, they're not necessarily the right individuals, except the ones that are, you know, that show a certain amount of fortitude as well. And hopefully, we can come to the council and says, you know, I think that your perception of that individual that you selected is not really working out, and here's the reason why. I agree with the whole idea of having five people per commission. I think it's, the smaller the group, the more practical it is to get things identified and carried forward. So I've, I hope that you move forward with, you know, establishing it as you've indicated, and cutting them down to five individuals. And it's also my hope that in the future, you look at perhaps having a police commission in a formal way, and in the same manner of selecting them. You know, given the size of the budget of the, of safety that we have in Glendale, and being such a growing budget, I think it's one that absolutely needs to have the same similar type of attention. And hopefully, we get a lot more people interested in partaking in that process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have a motion? Mr. Howard?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just want to go over, what I'm hearing so far is, one, on the motion at eight F, one, the direction regarding modifications of the code to create the terms that are concurrent with nominating council member terms, I'm hearing that's acceptable. The other point would be regarding the existing board and commission members. Exhibit two is the, we attached this report as the motion that reflected what we did with the Design Review Board members, and that was essentially, they were deemed removed effective the date of a reappointment, which gave the council the ability to reappoint those individuals or appoint someone else new. If that's the direction, we need to know that, so we can bring you back the appropriate motion, again, within this two-week timeframe. We want to bring it back quickly, so we can make the changes for you. So I need to know if that process is acceptable, that same process we did with the DRBs.
Mr. Draymond?
I will make the motion exactly as you just described, Mr. City Attorney, with the terms being co-terminous to the council terms, and with the, for lack of a better word, the recomposition of the councils, the decommissioning at the same time as recommissioning, so to speak, or reappointment.
And lastly, what we did with the Design Review Boards, and I guess I'm hearing if we're going to follow that model, we, when we removed them and reappointed, we treated those as two new four-year terms. Even if they've served some period of time, under our current code, you only have two terms. We're essentially notwithstanding that, they're getting two four-year, new four-year terms, and am I hearing that as well?
And in terms of the five versus seven?
Well-
That would be next on my list.
This is about the terms.
Question on the terms. So the proposal, or what we did with DRB, is let's say someone, the two-four-year limit-
Yes.
On many commissions, someone two-three-
Two-three year limit right now.
So someone could have been termed out-
Or very close to it.
In December.
Yes.
And should, should it be a council person's choice to appoint that person to be his appointee or nominate him for appointment? It's basically erased his prior service, zeroed out?
For purposes of terminus, yes. That's what you did before.
And then they could serve another.
Another two full terms, and these would be two four-year terms, if that would be the pleasure of the nominating council person, or his or her successor, should they not be successful in the next election, yes.
I think that might be a bit much. I'm not thinking of anyone in particular, but I think the point was, with these limits, was to get some sort of turnover on the commissions.
You want to start with a shorter, well, what you did do also, I'm glad you mentioned that, because the council terms are staggered, the initial appointment, for example, of someone who may have served a term and a half, let's say, may be a council member that only has two years left on their term. So the initial term would be for the same term that that council member has left to serve, and then they could serve another full four-year term. So that does shorten it somewhat.
Torts it by two, potentially two years.
Two years for some, and a little, it shortens it by, maybe, a time we get to about six months. But that's what was done with the DRBs.
And then the issue of, of the two, title two boards or commissions that are currently composed of seven members, seven and two-
Right.
Student, and one that is, it's just seven.
Yeah, just, yes, sir.
I, as part of my motion, I would be questioning that those be converted to five-person commissions.
On the, to make it clear so everyone knows, on the Commission on the Status of Women, the commission appoints the two student ex officios. It doesn't sound you want to affect that. It's really just the voting-
I don't want to do that with my motion, anyway.
Okay. But at this, at this point, what I'm hearing is, we'll bring you back an ordinance amendment along with everything else within the next two weeks, that will reduce that number of actual voting commission members from seven to five. And then as part of the process for reappointment, you can reappoint five, unless I hear anything about wanting to do that by way of attrition.
That's what I was going to recommend, the attrition. The next two up, terms are up, they just don't get reappointed. You're down to five now. How do you pick and choose who goes off?
Well, I think it's not that we pick and choose who goes off, it's that we appoint who we believe we want on.
Take them all off, and then reappoint five.
Yes, that's exactly.
Oh, okay, okay.
And how about the civil service? Civil service is not-
Civil Service Commission is a charter-created commission with four-year terms, and that's something that you're not, you're not going to touch with the ordinance. This is strictly Title II boards and commissions.
So currently, how do we deal with civil service?
You appoint civil service commissioners, you recruit and select them consistent with the resolution for recruitment and selection, but once they're appointed, they're appointed for four-year terms, unless you want to remove them by a majority vote of the council. But it's created by charter, and so this, we can't address this whole issue of making the terms co-terminous. You can do it by practice or policy, but we can't embed that in ordinance.
And the current appointment process is-
Vote of the council.
But it's, the nomination, though, is assigned randomly to-
Yes.
No, it's not randomly, it's-
Well, it's not random, it's by, well, it's by alphabetical, but each council member gets the opportunity to nominate one before-
I see.
The entire council. So we try to avoid having a council member in two nominations. That process is followed, but once they're appointed, they're on for a four-year term unless removed. We can't go in and change their terms unless it's a vote of the people.
And CDVG is covered? That's a title-
Development block, CDVG is already covered, you already did that, and that's why it's not mentioned in the report, other than as an example, you've numbered the seats, and you do nominations for them. They've already been, that's already been handed.
So they're not up for reappointment, then?
Not under the proposal before you, we could include them, but you've already addressed them separately, you've numbered their seats, and each council member, in fact, what you've done is you've made that slightly different than DRB, and I'll use the example of Councilmember Najarian nominates myself to be on the CDVG committee. Once Councilmember Najarian is off the council, that person essentially is off the CDVG. It's a numbered seat. So it's similar to DRB, but we don't use co-terminous. It's your nomination, and it's, in fact, I can pull up the exact language, because I looked at it again today. In fact, we actually, I think we have a copy of that here.
When did that, when did that change?
I'm going to pull that up right now. We had it on, it's, I think it's one of the exhibits. And if it's not, it's, it's in the memo, it's in the memorandum, prepared by Mr. Garcia.
Does that mean that since of the last election, that one of those commissioners' terms is up?
And when I'm going to get there. Didn't you appoint someone?
Nope.
I'll have to pull it up.
First I've heard of this.
Sure that there?
Looked at it earlier.
Those folks.
And it is slightly different.
Here's three years.
Many seats are numbered, one through five. Each council member should be assigned to nominate one person to a numbered seat. Committee members shall be appointed by a minimum of three affirmative votes. It allows the, so what happens, if someone leaves the commission because their term is up, the council member who appointed to that numbered seat, or if a new council member has been designated, let's say, Councilmember Yosefian had seat number five, Councilmember Yosefian's off, Councilmember Freeman will now have seat number five. And if Councilmember Freeman, that, in other words, the council, I'm sorry, the commissioner does not automatically leave the commission, but once their term is up, you would be appointing to fill that seat number five.
That council member would be able to, if they chose to.
Yes, able to, yes, sir.
So it is not automatic?
It is not automatic.
Similarly, when I was elected, council member, former council member Manukian's seat, or appointee, or nominee, I should say, that would, that fell to me. I never had an opportunity to, in other words, that, that person sitting in that numbered seat was not automatically off the CDVG.
Correct.
It was simply a matter of if I chose to reappoint him, and I chose not to reappoint someone else, to-
And it's correct, and those terms are for three years.
So why would, why would we not want to have the same process for that commission as we're adopting for the others?
I can answer for myself on that, Mr. Mayor. That is, I would propose that we do.
I agree. I mean, they were all listed, so I didn't know, are there any other exceptions?
No, that was, that was the only one. And the main reason that it was not, it was because it was, the process for CDVG, I believe, was redone in 2006. So it's rather recent. It was a, it was a committee that was turned into a commission, and I think this was sort of the precursor to what we do with the DRB. It was a start, so we can certainly include that committee, or that commission in the, or the committee within this. It is Title II.
I would definitely want to include it. The only thought I have, if I could jump in, I think that the CDVG has a very, they have a season, if you will, and that's pretty close to April. I wouldn't want a situation where, as a result of the election, there's a vacancy and someone's placed in and hasn't had the opportunity to visit the sites and look at the programs and all that, and be forced to participate in the vote. And I'm not exactly sure on the season and the timing, but-
Right, well, the funding, the funding cycle is basically just concluded. So, I mean, if we're going to move, this is the time to do it, because this is when they begin to do the things that you're describing, so we're very, very early.
Council gets in April.
But I think what Councilmember, but I think what Councilmember Najarian is speaking to is not when we reappoint them now, or reconstitute the commission now, it's that if, if there's a change on the seat on the council at the April, at an April election, a potentially new appointee to the CDVG might not have the time, get his wheels under him before he is asked to make decisions on, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, that's, that's the question, and I'm not sure exactly on the timing, and Mr. Durant's not here, but if we could-
Can we make an exception?
When is it coming? Is it after the election?
You recall, you get those recommendations in the May-June timeframe, because you implement them for the upcoming fiscal year. So they're actively doing their work with requests the first part of a calendar year. So, yeah, April would kind of fall in the middle of their- in the middle of their, their active time, now they're monitoring their contractors throughout the year, which is why they continue to meet, but, yeah, their active time is after January until June when they really get into their request for proposals and evaluation period.
So I wouldn't have a problem if we were to make the appointment effective at the conclusion of the CDBG.
In an election cycle.
Funding cycle.
An election cycle, yeah.
Right, right, after.
Let them finish their job.
I, we can come up with some language for that committee specifically to note that the term shall run coterminous with city council, which should not become effective until, and I'll talk with Mr. Duran, either come up with a date or a timeframe for that, if that's, if that's acceptable. And actually, they meet tomorrow, and I'm staffing that meeting, so they have an opportunity to talk with Mr. Duran about it.
Is that in your motion?
So, so, Mr. Mayor, could I inquire whether the city attorney understood my motion?
Yes, sir, I did.
Including all that?
Concurrent with nominating council terms, the existing board and commission members, we're going to treat it similar to the design review board, motion that was attached as exhibit two, the number of terms for reconstitute members of boards and commission, that's going to be four, I mean, sorry, it's going to be the two full terms regardless of prior service, commission on the status women arts and culture is going to be changed to five members, community development block grant committee is going to be included, but we're going to have specific language that, that has a specific effective date of their appointment or reappointment to coincide with the funding cycle.
That's your motion, right?
That will be my, I'll take that as motion.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Eric Quintero?
Yes.
With that direction, Mr. Mayor, members of council, it's our intention to be back to you while there's still a full council in the next few weeks with the necessary ordinances and motions to implement this.
Thank you. Next, please.
Nine under hearings at nine A is Director of Plank regarding Glendale Register of Historic Resources listing and Mills Act contract for the property located at 1344 Ross Point Avenue. At A1 is a resolution designating the property as a historic resource and authorizing Mills Act contract.
This is the one that I had to come back?
This is the one we've seen previously, beautiful home.
You still have to open the public hearing, I presume.
Is there a public hearing?
Yes, there is, it's a public hearing.
Open the public hearing, I don't have any cards on this item, I'll close the public hearing.
Where move nine A1.
You already had a motion.
Ms. Friedman made the motion, you'll second?
I'll second that.
Yeah, back off.
Roll call. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers, Raymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Eric Quintero?
Better not say no.
Next, please.
At B is Director of Planning regarding appeal of Design Review Board case number 2PDR 2009-023A for a property located at 1741 West Mountain Street. B1 is motion to sustain the Design Review Board's decision to approve the DRB application, and at B2 is a motion to reverse the Design Review Board's decision to approve the DRB application.
All right. Mr. Starburg.
Let's go to Tim Voight for the staff report, Tim?
Yes, and I'd like to go to Milka Toledo, the case planner, she has a brief presentation.
She's not going to somebody?
Will be a problem.
Going back to you.
I'm going to pass out some additional information that was submitted by one of the appellants.
So neither side was happy with the decision, is that correct?
Correct. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, this, first of all, my name is Milka Toledo, I am the case planner for this project. Just a brief summary on this project, the project consists of basically a facade remodel and the enclosure of an 80-square-foot covered area located on the east side of the property towards the front of the existing single-family dwelling. Property is located at 1741 West Mountain Street, for reference, that is in the northwest Glendale area. The existing property is developed with a two-story, 2,641-square-foot single-family house in the R1R zone. The proposal is to remodel the exterior, the front facade of the house, and this entails removing the existing 189-square-foot front porch enclosure and introducing a new front porch on the first floor and a balcony on the second floor. Based on the current conditions of the house as existing, it appears that the front porch once existed and was subsequently remodeled by enclosing and converting the first floor into habitable floor space and converting the balcony above. The existing design resembles Spanish colonial revival architecture. The proposed remodel that was presented to the Design Review Board on April 23rd of 2009 and was approved with five conditions on that day was to include some craftsmen-influenced features while maintaining the existing Spanish roof tile and other Spanish-influenced architectural features. The board's conditions are primarily designer-related except for the last condition, which referred to more of site planning, which was to work with staff to provide a location for the trash and mechanical equipment. Subsequently, there were two appeals that were submitted, one appeal was by the subject property owner, Ms. Christensen, and the second appeal was by the abutting property owner, Mr. Bina. The property owner, in this case, I'll refer to her as appellate number one, she is requesting to modify some of the conditions of approval, specifically those two conditions, number one and number two, that relates to the design, again, which the board stated to introduce more craftsmen-influenced details, and that is highlighted in your report. Appellant number two is requesting that the council overturn the Design Review Board's decision to approve the project because there were some issues related to the site planning because they felt that this, that the board should not have approved the project site plan without knowing or identifying the location of the AC equipment and the trash area at that time when the board approved the project. Specifically, conditions number one and two, and I'd like to just go over appellate's number one's argument, specifically number one and two of the decision, record of decision, it states to introduce craftsmen details at the three gables, that would be the front and the sides. There we go, that's the proposed facade remodel, which was the elevation drawing or plans that were approved by the board. So again, to introduce craftsmen details at the three gables, the front and the sides, and to remove the plaster material on the fascia, and to expand the width with the wood element or similar with appropriate detail and dimensions consistent with craftsmen architecture. The appellate's desire is to basically maintain the original proposal that the board approved. They, I don't know if they're going to present today, but if there are some modifications that they're willing to make, they will address that in their presentation.
This is what they proposed, this is what they want, or is this what they finally?
This is what they, this is what they proposed to the board and what they want. If there is something different, it has not been presented to staff or for the board to review.
Taking all the arches out.
Well, to introduce siding at the gables is what they, the board.
Well, the arches on the second floor, actually, you showed before, am I missing something?
No, the arches on the second floor, that's obviously being removed, that was part of the proposal.
And this will be in its place.
That's correct, what they're doing is that they're removing that enclosure on the second-floor balcony, they're highlighting a new second-floor balcony, they're introducing the wood columns, the wood railings, they're introducing the stone at the base and introducing or highlighting the porch that perhaps once previously conditioned, existed.
Can you show us on there what, what the board's conditions would do to this, to this plan?
To this specific plan, the board suggested or condition having them introduce siding at the gables, that was this front gable.
Like wood siding?
Wood siding, in this case, if wood siding wouldn't work in case it's a high-fire zone area, then they could introduce, like hardy plank or some sort of cement board siding would be appropriate. This is a side elevation because the plans that were submitted, since the only, the east side was affected as well as the front facade, we don't have a west facade, but that is highlighted in your packet, there's a picture of it as well as the rear, the west side and the rear is not being impacted as a result of the changes, it's just the east side, so they suggested introducing the woods, excuse me, siding at the gables, and that would include the front gable and then the two side gables. And in addition to that, they mentioned to increase the width of the fascia with certain dimensions that would be a character defining of craftsmen architecture. The proposed, or in this case, rather, the existing roof tile would still, would not be changed, that will remain as existing.
What did the DRB have to say about the Spanish roof tile on the craftsmen?
Well, that's where the board was torn, they had, two members had, and this is again highlighted in your report, had issues regarding the design, specifically one member made, who made the motion, felt that there was conflicting architectures battling against each other, and it was basically pick one or the other, however, the designer felt that, and staff too, because we did recommend approval for this project, we felt that while the, there are two, or in this case, there's a hybrid, meaning two different architectures coming together, we felt that it was something that could be approved and it actually worked well, and we did recommend approval for the project.
Is that river rock on, what is that stone?
It's real rock, I actually do have the sample board, I can pass it around.
And is that a craftsmen feature, the river rock?
Yes, you do find it in some, on some homes, but one of the main character-defining features of craftsmen would be obviously the siding, wood windows, the house does have wood windows, so they are, actually, they're located behind the porch, if you will, it actually does have windows, stained glass windows.
What about the, just the massing of the house, it being so symmetrical and so boxy, would you typically see that in craftsmen architecture?
Yes, as well as the, the large porch as well.
Understand, existing, you can't see most of the tile roof, is that right?
That is correct.
So when they, in essence, cut in half by only having that roof fronting over the windows, now you're seeing the rest of the tile roof that's not available, not visible from the street, right?
Not seeing the final product, but based on a visual, yes, that may be true, it may most likely be visible.
I can understand if they're taking all that off and bringing this down to, this wide down to this, why they're keeping the tile roof at all, seems like a lot of work.
I'll have the applicant address or the designer in his presentation. Again, this was the, the design that they presented, that they wanted, and again, they've appealed it because they would rather not go towards the craftsmen look, or more, add additional craftsmen to their proposal.
Okay, any other questions?
So they want the architect setting up here to decide?
I have one last question, I'm sorry. Are they objecting to all five of the conditions?
No, just specifically one and two.
Okay, so they're okay with three?
That is correct.
And four and five?
That is correct. Appellant number two, as stated earlier, Mr. Bina, he had certain issues related to site planning, and let me, here we go, the site plan, and I've kind of made some amendments, the site planning here identifies a location as it currently exists for the HVAC and the trash area that staff intends to approve. At the time, this information was not presented to the board, again, in protocol typically is that often these items are not located on the plans until the applicant applies for a building permit, with the applied condition, identification of these items are required on the plans and verified for zoning compliance during the plan check process. In addition, the case planner does verify that these items are addressed in the field during the design review final inspection process, so that's why they were not presented to the board at that time. However, as stated earlier, the appellate, appellate number two felt that these items are important and they needed to be identified on the plans prior to making a final decision. Based on a current recent site visit, the new mechanical equipment for the house has been installed and is located approximately 10 feet from the Easterly, Easterly property line outside the driveway, and it appears to be in compliance with the zoning code as it relates to location, it does not require screening, again, because it is outside the setback. The trash bins are located within the Easterly interior setback area towards the rear of the property, next to the garage, and it is next to also a approximate six-foot-high boundary line wall. Staff, again, does intend to approve this area as a designated location for the trash bins, the location of both the trash area and mechanical equipment appear to be in compliance with zoning regulation, and this is actually the location of the trash area, excuse me, of the mechanical equipment and how it looks like presently, these are temporary exposed ducts, this is where the addition will take place, so once the addition, the 80-square-foot addition at the side takes place, this is what it will look like in relation to, as it relates to the location of the mechanical equipment.
It's not being moved, then?
No, it, it has already been moved. This, actually, they pushed it further.
Okay, so.
Towards the front.
What, what is he asking, that it be removed again?
That is correct. According to the diagram that I just passed around, they have proposed another option, and that is to relocate it on the other side of the house.
It's all, and you not only move the unit, you do all the wiring, all the conduit, insulation throughout the house cleared to the other side?
According to their diagram, that's what it seems like they're proposing.
And one other question, since we're now the Design Review Board, do we get into locations of air conditioners and trash cans, I never heard a Design Review Board doing that.
It's a site planning.
Look at it.
It's a site planning issue, so, again, I did verify that question, as a matter of fact, with our deputy city attorney, Mike Garcia, and he said, yes, that is a site planning issue that the board does have discretion over or jurisdiction over.
You're telling me anybody that wants to appeal a Design Review Board matter to the council, or even Design Review Board, if a neighbor doesn't like where he plans to put his trash can, he can appeal it to the council on, and we can decide where he puts his trash can, that could be moved by a child when our backs are turned?
Well, they are portable, they can be moved.
Members of council, I think Councilmember Weaver almost answered his own question, it's with a residential home and you're looking at the standard cans, certainly you can indicate a preference in site planning for where you want them, but the reality is, they're going to move around, unless you put them on somebody else's property or illegally, or otherwise illegally place them somewhere to block access to your garage, they're going to move around and it's not a code violation if they do.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions for the staff?
Yes.
Mr. Raymond?
And I'm sorry to ask you to repeat yourself, I, while I was flipping pages, I, Councilmember Friedman already asked, the, the two. Friedman already asked, the two conditions that Ms. Christensen has turned with are two and three, did you say?
One and two.
One and two. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? All right. We, really, we have two appellants here. So let's make sure that we separate the two appellants. Appellant number one is appealing the DRB decision, et cetera. Appellant number two, while is appealing the DRB decision, is really focusing on that air conditioning unit, number one, and then the garbage cans, number two.
Mr. Drayman, any suggestions?
Yeah.
My suggestion is to take appellant two first, because accepting, accepting or not accepting appellant one, the owners could impact two or vice versa. I think that taking two first, and then dealing with, in other words, hearing his concerns and then dealing with the house and the owner of the house in that order might make more sense.
That's fine with me. Okay, let's open the public hearing, and we'll start with appellant number two.
Do you, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers?
Can you give us some idea of how much time you'll need?
I'll be very swift.
No, you can be, you can speak as long as you want. I just need to know, you think it'll be 10 minutes, 15?
Three minutes should be enough, actually.
About what?
Three minutes?
About three minutes? Okay. And then, well, I'll give you five.
Okay, thank you.
And then, if someone wants to rebut the appellant, then they can also come to the microphone. All right, sir, your name for the record.
My name is Vlad Bina. I own the property next door. I don't live there anymore. It's a rental right now.
If I could just ask you one question quickly. As you look at the house, is it the property on the right or the property on the left?
It's the property on the right.
Okay, thank you.
You're on the corner.
Yes, I'm in the corner of Mountain and Vista. This is the facade actually facing the driveway. So my issue here is I have five windows facing the driveway. Three windows are from the bedrooms and one window, two windows actually are from the living room. So I have quite an exposure to what happens on the driveway. And that prompted me to ask the design review board for a more precise location for the air conditioning and the garbage bin location. I haven't been shown the proposed location for the air conditioning, which has been shown five minutes ago, which I agree with. It's been moved more or less in the same place where it was before. The unit has been changed. The main issue with the unit before that was that for five years, the noise level of the unit was far above the code level that was allowed by the city code. A notice with the neighborhood services was made, and the issue has been finally resolved. It took a long time. But at this point, the air conditioning unit is within the code levels for the noise. My concern was for the location. The area has been enclosed, or is proposed to be enclosed over there, so the AC unit should have been moved somewhere else. By staying in the same place, I think it's okay with me. I don't think it has any more exposure than it has already had. And the noise level has been resolved. For the garbage location, I think it's quite important to designate a garbage location, especially in this case, because for four years, it has been in front of my bedroom windows. And I don't think it's a normal situation. Moving it a little bit to the left and securing the location by design, I think it's an important thing. And according to the code also, it has to be enclosed with a wall at least five foot high, and it has to be covered at least 40% horizontally above. I'm not addressing this. I would be pleased if it was to be moved only five feet away from my bedroom window. And the new location, I think, solves this problem. As long as it's not brought again in front of my bedroom window, I should be okay with it. So pending those two issues being resolved, I agree with the project.
Okay, Mr. Drayman?
Can I get a clarification on this issue of the, the parameters that were just described with regard to the?
Commercial.
The garbage, isn't that, that's, isn't that a commercial?
Mr. Foy, what are the standards for trash enclosure for a single-family residential?
There are none. There are some standards similar to what he described, but they are, the R1 zone is exempted from those.
Okay, so what he's describing would be for multifamily or for commercial, but not for R1?
Not for residential.
Okay. Which gets back to Mr. Howard's statement that as long as they're not in the front yard setback, generally people can put their barrels where they can fit them.
I thought the code was that they really shouldn't be seen from the street. They have to be.
You put them out on trash day, but then you're supposed to remove them out. No, there really isn't a code provision, which is why this came up before design review in the first place. The staff was just encouraging people to plan for an appropriate location.
No, but I mean, in terms of, not so much from planning, but in terms of public works and so forth, I thought it couldn't be seen from the street.
There's a number of areas in the city that's the only place you can put them. Example, I think up in the Mountain Ross mine area, there's a number of locations where the homes are very close to the sidewalk and they have no, because of the way the homes are configured on a lot, they're visible. They're just, you can't just place them out on the parkway or on the street for a period of 24 hours before pickup.
Okay, so you're basically okay with?
The location of the air conditioning system has been mentioned in the plan. It hasn't moved anywhere else for where it is right now. And it has been brought back to code. So the AC problem has been removed, I think. The garbage bin area, if it is away from my window, as you mentioned, you know, it's movable, but upon common distance, it shouldn't be placed in front of the windows. If it's going to be where it is right now, placed in the, in the plan, I would approve it too. One more note, if possible, for construction area. The driveway should be cleaned during construction. It shouldn't be used as storage. And I would appreciate this if during future construction, as opposed to the previous construction that took place, the driveway would be kept clean of debris and construction elements. And also that work couldn't have been done in the driveway as it was before.
Okay. Is that a fact, Mr. Foy, that the air conditioning unit is, as he describes it, in the location that the appellant has described it?
Yeah, well, the picture you saw is the current location of it. It's outside of the setback.
It's code compliant, and I believe they purchased, the new one they purchased is at a noise rating which is within the city's noise standards. So it is code compliant.
Okay, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
I don't have any cards to rebut the second appellant, so we'll.
Spread the motion.
So we'll move to appellant number one.
Thank you. My name is Kent Jamison. I'm the project architect. There's two issues here. Let me start with the more minor one. The air conditioning unit was originally with the house, I guess, forever, essentially. And the neighbor complained that it was too noisy. So the owner of the home called and got it tested, and the maximum DB level is 40 that they allow, and their unit was 45. So it was a few dB higher than what was allowed. So the owner spent $14,000 and bought a new unit, it's high efficiency and very quiet. And it's about 10 feet from, but in a legal location. So basically, we feel that, or the owner feels that they've done what they need to do in order to satisfy the neighbor, and he seems to be satisfied with that. He had one proposal of moving it to the other side of the house, but I guess that's gone by the wayside. On the trash cans, he wanted us to move it up. We have done that. So I guess that issue is resolved too. I mean, we've moved it to the location that he would want us to have it, which is okay. So it's in front of a six-foot block wall. So I guess that issue is resolved. Now, if we can go to the design review, Ms. Toledo's going to put that picture back up. I think there was some misunderstanding as to what we are really going to do and what changes that we wanted to make. There's going to be no changes at all to the roof, roof.
I understand now. I looked at the side view. I could tell.
Okay.
I know. And it comes down and then the other one's coming up.
Right.
Yeah, I understand.
Basically, the home was built in the 20s. At some point along the line, they filled in the front porch, making it living space, and they put those arches up, which are very unattractive, in my opinion. We made a proposal, and we felt that it was attractive. It was readily accepted. Everyone on the design review board said, this is a huge improvement, which it is. But they felt that we were going, leaning a little bit towards the craftsmen, and so they wanted to go more craftsmen. And we feel that that's the opposite direction of where we want to go, because the Spanish texture stucco is going to remain, the red Spanish tile roof is going to remain. There's no way to convert that, so to speak, into a craftsman, you know, by adding shingle siding to the gable ends. So that's what we objected to in the conclusion of the design review board. We are willing to make concessions, though, because if the design review boards feel this is going a little bit too craftsmen, we are willing to substitute the wood railings for iron railings, Spanish iron railings, and eliminate all the river rock and just do the Spanish stucco finish to match the house. So that's basically, you know, what our proposal would be. And I know in the staff report, they said, well, we could just send the whole thing back to design review. Problem is, we've already been six months in this process, and we would like to get started. And if you could approve it with iron railing and the stucco where the stone is, keeping it very much Spanish and very little craftsmen, then we would be delighted to have that approval this evening so we can proceed.
Right now, it's wood railings, vertical railings?
We're proposing now wood railing, vertical wood railing, and we would substitute that with an iron, more Spanish railing.
I got to ask Mr. Friedman, because I've watched a lot of old movies of the West, you know, Spanish buildings, and they have balconies that are all made out of wood.
I know. We didn't find that inconsistent with Spanish at all.
Changing it to wrought iron seems to be going further away from the Spanish. What's your opinion as a former design review member that I appointed?
Well, let's, he's on, he's on a.
Let him finish on the clock, and then I can give you my.
Okay.
So anything else?
So the, there was one member on the design review board that was pretty adamant about the mixed styles. And so he wanted us to go further into the craftsmen, and on the gable ends, the front that faces the street, and on the east and west, to put shingle siding with a big wide fascia board at the top. But then it's Spanish tile above it. It just doesn't make sense to me. So we would rather actually come back more and keep it more traditional Spanish. We're willing to do anything that the board recommends. The river rock is something that's typically used in craftsmen-style houses. And we're perfectly willing to save the 15,000 or 20,000 dollars it would take to do that in real river rock and just do it in stucco, which I think would also look good, but it would just be more in keeping with the Spanish flavor of the home. So basically, what we're looking for is either wood or iron railings and elimination of the river rock, and approve the elimination of those first two requirements on the design review board. Any questions?
Okay, no, no questions. Have a seat here at the front, okay?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
And Ms. Friedman, now to.
Ms. Friedman will go first.
I wasn't going to go first, but I will if you're.
Yeah, I want to know what, watching the old time movies, you know, you're the advocate background too.
Okay, well, reading the staff report, it sounds like maybe there was some misunderstanding, because I think that the board had the impression that you were trying to do something that was more craftsmen, and that's why they went the direction they did. That's according to the staff report. I didn't have the benefit of seeing the actual meeting. But I understand why they were confused, because to my eye, you have a lot of elements here that are much more craftsmen than Spanish, with the river rock, the front door, the wood porch, a lot of that. I'm glad to hear that you would rather do something that's more traditional Spanish, Spanish colonial revival, because then it matches the roof tiles and a lot of the other elements in the house. My hesitation, quite honestly, with giving you an approval tonight, isn't that I don't think that what you describe sounds wonderful. I think it sounds perfectly acceptable. It's that just typically in the city, whether it's in front of design review or in front of council, we need to kind of see what we're approving. And there's a lot of elements that you've mentioned that I think would need to be signed off on. You know, typically, the design review board would sign off on the railing material and how it all works, on the materials. And so, if I was sitting on design review right now, I wouldn't feel comfortable approving without being able to see the finished product, without seeing the elevations, without seeing the materials that you are proposing. So that said, there's another option of not sending you back to the design review board, which would be to have the staff make some of those approvals. So, you know, I'd like to hear what the rest of the council thinks. But my two, my feeling is, the direction you're going sounds perfectly acceptable. That's not a problem. But I need to either have the design review board sign off on the finished product, the finished proposal, or staff. I'm not sure at this point, you know, where the council's comfortable, whether staff could sign off on it, whether they want to sign off on that, or whether their recommendations to send it back to council, I'm sending it back to design review. So I'd like to hear that from them. I also would like to just hear from the, first, the second appellant at some point, whether what he's heard in terms of the trash, I heard with him the AC, and it doesn't have to be now, but at some point, it sounds like the AC is acceptable. I just, I'm curious as to your feeling about the trash enclosure. It sounds like they've moved it somewhere that's more acceptable to you. So I don't know.
Sir, Mr. Jamison, you'll have to have a seat.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
We're all going to have to comment first.
Clear now about the AC position. It was not shown in the first project. I think I'm agreeing with it. The trash, as long as it's kept there, again, it's no guarantee. It's just a matter of confidentiality and neighbor relations. I'm okay with that, too.
Okay. Well, I'm glad to hear that. It sounds like we've come, there's been a resolution made between the neighbors on this. And it's not every day that we can help with a neighbor dispute, but it sounds like the city did, did help with that one.
The only remaining issue is the driveway shouldn't be used as storage and construction area during the future construction, if that could be.
Well, that is normal course of construction, the building and safety department.
It's the neighbor's. That's another issue altogether.
Thank you.
Because even up in our area, they've had to bring in the huge trash cans, and they've sat in front of the residence from the driveway for months. They have to, to take all that material down.
Sure.
And put it into a container. So there will be some disruptions.
It's probably a give and take, but I'm open to discussions here.
Thank you.
Okay, are you through, Ms. Friedman?
Through.
Yep. Mr. Weaver?
I like it going back to the stucco, because it, this stands out. You go by, you'll see it. If this is in the correct proportions, it stands out. It doesn't look right. Taking stone out and doing the stucco. And then if you put landscaping in front to break up the vertical masses, I think it'd look better. Even along the side, I think that would help a lot. And I go back to the old Westerns again. I'd like to see a wood balcony myself, too. I think it'd look more traditional Spanish than putting wrought iron railings up there. I don't know when they came into existence, but they sure weren't there in the old West.
The Spanish architecture can definitely use wood railings. It just more is the type of wood, you know, the, sort of the shape of it and all of that.
Well, we could specify what.
But that's why my suggestion is that someone needs to take a look at all of that, to be sure that the elements are consistent, if they really want to do something Spanish. But I wanted to ask staff whether they feel that they can make those approvals and get it to that stage, or if they feel more comfortable with it going back in front of the design review board.
Ms. Friedman, Alan Lemus, principal urban designer with the city. I think if the council has an interest in giving some direction to take the, replace the stone with the plaster, as you said, the sort of wood slats, old Western, I think we can probably come up with some photo examples and work with the applicant to make that, have that be at a staff level decision, if that's where the council.
We can make the decision here and just direct staff and not see it again.
Personally, that's a compromise that I would feel comfortable with. Just making sure that, I mean, I would want to give the same kind of conditions that a design review board would, which is that if they're going to do something that's Spanish colonial revival architecture, that the staff review all of the details to be sure that it's consistent with that architecture.
Yeah, I think in effect, what you're doing is modifying the original approval conditions that the board made and deferring some of those decisions over to staff. conditions that the board made, and deferring some of those decisions over to staff.
Okay, but that's just me, I...
Because I like that wood finish and everything.
Mr. Drayman?
Oh, my.
Oh, you're gonna go against us, huh?
Well, I have, yeah, several comments, and I, I'm not sure it's gonna sync up with anything anybody up here is saying or thinking, maybe thinking, but not saying, anyway. First of all, Mr. Bina, I'm glad that this could be resolved, and I hope it is a resolution with regard to the trash. I wanna say to the architect, although I like your design in general, I'm not at all impressed with the tone with regard to the neighbor, you know, "Well, we moved it, oh, yeah, we shoved it over," and, yeah, okay, that's where he wants it, as though these kind of very common, basic courteousness, common, common sense kind of thing is just some sort of silliness. It's not. I wouldn't want trash barrels stored under my bedroom windows either, whether I was living there or whether it was a rental. I think those are important accommodations, and I don't think they'd be to be belittled, and especially in a public forum. Having said that, the, so these are the two choices, Mr. Chair. We take an existing badly modified, at some stage along the way, badly modified Spanish style home, and convert it partway into a craftsman-esque home, leaving the Spanish tile roof. Or we take a strange amalgamation of Spanish and newly created craftsman style and put wrought iron railings and slap plaster all over it and say it's more traditional in keeping with a Spanish colonial. Boy, those are not two choices that I would wanna live next to, to tell you the truth. But at least, they're two styles that are compatible. I just wish they were separate, one or the other. You know, we're headed in the right direction by taking a Spanish style, now a craftsman style design with a Spanish tile roof, and we'll be happy to slap more plaster over it and say, see, we're in a better direction, because now it's closer to a Spanish colonial? Sorry, I know a fair bit about architecture myself, and both of what are being proposed are, in my opinion, bad options and bad decisions. So I have no other comments to make, other than I haven't made up my mind, so I guess we'll find out when we vote, and as I said, it will likely be irrelevant, anyway, because I'm sure there are firmer opinions up on this dais, one way or the other, than mine alone. In terms of the idea of whether we leave it with staff or send it back to DRB, I think the DRB process got us here, and my impression is that, from what I'm hearing with regard to staff, is just some recommendations to further kind of modify what, to me, is kind of outrageous amalgamation of styles that, you know, is there such a thing as craftsman colonial? In any case...
Actually, in Argentina.
I don't know. It's, I don't know. Anyway, I, I just, I don't have anything more to say on it, other than, and I want to hear the rest of my colleagues and the rest of the debate, and I will vote.
Well, I, I don't completely disagree, which is why I suggested, you know, that we consider sending it back to design review board, because I think that there's, I think it's going in a direction, but a lot of discretion, there's a lot of things that need to be signed off on. I wonder whether the reason that we are here is, as we've been talking about, the design review feeling at times like they don't have enough times up at bat. I mean, it's something that we heard at their study sessions. I don't wanna bring that issue up now, but it seems like we're seeing this along the way. You know, it's not, they've given, the proposals that they're given, sorry, the conditions that they were giving would change this quite a bit. And again, with the situation where design review is signing off on something, giving a lot of discretion to staff to make the final approval, with some pretty big changes. And when I was on the board, that wasn't the way it worked. When we, when we said yes to something, we knew what we were getting, and that's not what's happening now. The same way that I'm not really comfortable sending this off, not knowing what it's gonna look like. That's the way I started my comments, that I'm, when I was on design review for five years, when we said yes to a project, we pretty much knew what it was gonna look like. And that's not the way that the process is working now, and it's not the way that it would be leaving here now, either, if we were to, if we were to say yes.
Mr. Drayman?
Well, this is not an indictment of you, Councilmember Friedman, because I never observed you doing this. But to be quite frank, what design review boards were doing were endless rounds of DRB members with Sharpies redesigning the projects, and that is not their role. Their role is not to design the project, it's to evaluate it. And as I say, that is nothing I ever observed you doing, and that's why when we reconstituted our DRBs, that's why when I had the opportunity, I appointed you to the DRB. But that, nonetheless, this, to me, is a tweenie, and I don't know what this is supposed to be. You know, it's a Volkswagen with a Rolls Royce front end, and I don't know, I just, you know, I'm not sure what I'm, who I'm helping by saying yes. My inclination is to say that it needs to go back to design review, and it needs to come back with a style. Had this design come back with an appropriate style roof on it, I probably wouldn't be saying a word. But this is just weird to me.
I don't even own a Sharpie.
There you go.
Wanted to let you know that.
You're, that's...
Mr. Jerry?
Thank you. I, in many respects, I agree with Mr. Drayman. I think this house is searching for its identity, has an identity crisis currently. When I look at it, I see so much craftsman currently, as currently constituted with the framed wood windows on the first floor, and the door with all the panes of glass, and the use of wood. And when you get to the second floor, I definitely see the Spanish revival with the arches and the heavy use of the stucco. The plan, as they, as it was projected, certainly swings it to the, to the craftsman. I see the river rock, I see the symmetry, I see the wood doors with the panes, the But then, when you look at the fascia, the gable, if you will, I see that that's where it's lost, so I can really understand how the design review board was saying, "Well, put some texture and articulation on the front of that gable," and it will, I mean, it's not gonna turn it into a silk purse, but I think would give it a little more consistency on that type of style. I'm ready to approve and to confirm, reaffirm their comments on conditions one and two. I don't wanna give discretion to staff to design it, because we've got a design review board, not a design review staff. And as much as I have faith in staff, I'm, you know, I think it's something that we need to see and vet, if this is gonna be a change to something more Spanish, if the suggestion is that, okay, we've gone too far craftsman, we'll back off, we'll go back to Spanish. I think we need to see what that ultimately is gonna look like. I mean, I think it's a very, you know, you're really performing surgery, a facelift, that is gonna swing this from, from one style to the other. I'm not sure any style is wrong, or any style is better, but I think it needs to have some consistency, and we need to see where that's going. I think the neighborhood also deserves to see where that's going. So there is something that makes sense, and is not a, you know, cosmetic surgery gone bad.
Remodel.
So that, that's where I, I'm at. I know the roof does create a problem with that, that tile roof certainly brings the overtones of Spanish. But then again, the, you know, the symmetrical nature of it and the balance certainly brings it back to craftsman, so, as I said, I don't have, either style is good. I think you have to either go more one way, or more the other way. I'm not sure just putting an iron railing, or the other suggestion, removing the river rock and putting stucco is gonna solve that problem. It's still gonna need further work to, to bring out the style, one or the other. So that's where I'm at.
Mr. Mayor? Well, let me make a comment. Yeah, I would like to see it go back to the DRB. I don't think the design is appropriate, and the suggestions for some of the railing and other issues, I, I think the best, that's why we have DRBs, and go back to the DRB and see what you can work out with them. Mr. Weaver?
Well, I can see. It looks like the owner's willing to compromise, rather than just let design review board see the revision. My question is, how fast can the applicant get it back to, to the design review? They've been out of six months already. How much longer would it happen if they have the plans done already? Or how soon could they get them done? It shouldn't take an architect too long to redraw them, taking the stone out. I couldn't tell if that's wood or wrought iron railings as it is. If that satisfies design review, then I guess staff could work with the applicant, say, "Yeah, we can recommend to design review that this is appropriate now." And those two things, I don't know if that's enough. I mean, we're certainly in a quandary. We don't know, visualize it enough, so I think we're gonna all end up saying back to design review, but posthaste, not six months.
Okay, I actually have one card from the public, Margaret Hammond. No? No? Okay. All right, what is the...
Please, please, councilmembers, I submitted a card, also.
Oh, you did?
I'm Suzanne Christensen, the property owner.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I, I agree with one of the councilmembers that this is cosmetic surgery, but I don't view it as a facelift, but as a scar revision. This house was originally, and we know this from some work we've done on the inside, a one-story craftsman-style house. The windows on the first floor are original. The windows on the second floor were added in 1927, when the second story was added. And from what we can tell, that was when it was Spanishified. I had hoped to find underneath stucco and things, old woodwork, that would bring more craftsman detail to the second floor and to the balcony, but sadly, it doesn't exist. So this mishmash was done, but it was done in 1927. The only way to make this house either purely Spanish or purely craftsman is to tear the whole thing down, and while I'm willing to spend a hundred thousand to remodel the facade, I'm not willing to spend three or four hundred thousand to tear it down and build an entirely new home on the site. Well, I am willing to compromise and do different things, put right on railing if someone thinks that's better than the wood we have. The design that, that we really prefer is this one. This is not a charming rendering of what the house will look like. I don't know if someone can raise the screen. There is an artist rendition. I asked an artist to do a watercolor, frankly so, I could see what it would look like, because I'm not a, I'm a retired attorney, I'm not a professional in this area, and I could not visualize what it would look like.
Yeah.
The, the watercolor is a much better rendition of what it will look like if it is done in the manner that we have proposed. Now, the biggest problem with this house is the, the, the front gable is very heavy, and it hangs over, and it looks like it's going to crush the house down, and then you have these tiny little arches, which really don't relate to anything. So our first thing, the first objective we had was to remove the arches, remove the tiny little arches, enlarge that space, and shrink the triangle, to take the triangle down to its minimum level, which is make the bottom line of the triangle equal to the roof line at the bottom of the tile. That would minimize the gable, it would remove that sense that things are just hanging over. Now, we, when I asked the artist to do this rendition that's being passed around now, I had him do it with a variety of options, plaster columns, river rock going all the way up. We looked at a lot of things, and this was frankly the most appealing. Now, I'm not an architect, I'm not an expert, but just like the Supreme Court Justice, who when he asked to define pornography, said, "I can't define it, but I know it when I see it." Of all the things we looked at, this is frankly the best, and we have shown this watercolor to all of our neighbors and all of our friends, and they are wowed. They think it's great. Now, it's not the prettiest house in the city of Glendale, it's not the, it's not the Eleanor Toll House, it's not going to be anything that's ever gonna be on the Hoover Tour of Homes, but it's much better than what we have. And I think that when the design review board initially proposed the siding on the gables, at first, I was excited, because there's nothing I love more than craftsman. I learned about craftsman when I moved to Glendale, and, you know, it's been a beautiful relationship since then. But I, I took the time, and I drove around the neighborhood again, and I looked at other houses, and there's a house just on the other side, on the left, as you're facing my house, that was a total teardown. It was a little 1950s tiny house, total teardown, and beautifully done, and they have siding on their gables, but they have an asphalt composition roof. The proportions are different. It's a one-story house, and it looks really good where it's placed in that house. But I think adding the siding to the gable here would be disproportionate. The proportion of the roof and the siding won't work, because the, when you put siding in a gable, it really emphasizes the gable, your eye is really drawn to it, and then you have this roof, this Spanish roof, that Spanish tile roof, that's very tiny. If we open up the fascia, and I had to find out what fascia was after the design review board mentioned it, it's the wood that goes around the edges of the triangle. If you open up the fascia and make the fascia wider, it makes the roof look even smaller. One of the problems with this house is there's no overhang, there's no roof overhang, it just, maybe an inch or two inches. In a craftsman-style house, you'd see that overhang, in a lot of Spanish-style houses, you'd see that overhang. With this house, as it's, do I have to stop?
No.
Thank you. Which, this house, as it's currently proposed, isn't really one style, but it goes closer to really to the Monterey style. Now, if it were really Monterey, it wouldn't have a gable in the front, it, you know, would just have the angle of the long roof line come down, and it probably wouldn't be raised off the ground as much as it is. It's probably a four-foot raised foundation in the front and zero in the back. But looking at the other Monterey-style homes in the neighborhood, there are a lot of elements of those homes that are reflected here. You have the square wood railings, the kind of, you know, Stickley-style railings there. You have the windows, and we have left the original windows. We've actually moved the windows, because when the, when the house was added on to in 1927, they added the top story five feet wider than the bottom story, creating an overhang, and then they centered the upstairs windows over the new width, and they left the downstairs windows centered over the old width. So one of the problems is, when you open up the downstairs front porch and open up the upstairs balcony, is you see windows that are shifted two and a half feet off-center. So one thing we've done with permits is, we have moved the bottom floor windows over two and a half feet, you know, anticipating ultimately we'd get permission to open up both the front and, and, both the upstairs and downstairs porches. So we've done that. We've retained the original windows. We've tried to retain in this as much as we possibly can of everything that's original in the house. In fact, when we had the doors, which had been horribly painted, when we had them stripped and stained, we had them repaired, so we could use the original doors. We've used, we've kept everything possible, we've even started a little historical museum of the things we found in the house. I love this house, and I love living in it. We found, under the stairway, we found newspaper articles that... under the stairway, we found newspaper articles that the workers were reading in 1926 when they were, when they were working on the remodel. We found an article by Babe Ruth that golf is not going to become the national sport, that baseball will remain the national sport. I found lace curtains and buttons and old pieces of wallpaper, and I've saved all of those. I know what the wallpaper in the downstairs originally looked like. So, I know that different people have different opinions as to what looks good. We haven't had a single complaint from anyone, from any of our neighbors about what this will look like. And frankly, when I think that, when it comes to what may be a difference of taste, I think that, I'm not a crass woman. I'm not someone who's lacking in any, any sense of the aesthetic. I think that when it comes to a matter of taste, that it might be wise for the council to leave a difference of taste to the person who's willing to put the money up to make the change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Comment. Ms. Ma'am, I had asked about the scale on this, if it's correct to scale. This is, this shows differently. For instance, this railing down here, steps coming down, does not show here. It just shows steps coming down. The height of the wall here is about the same height as the windows, where here, the stone is much greater than the height of the windows.
Uh-huh.
So, you know, I hope this is more true than what this is.
I think that, that it's difficult to really see what something looks like.
I know. You did an oblique view, but I'm saying the proportion of this to the windows is different than what I'm seeing there. Now, you have shrubbery in here and stuff that also helps camouflage. That's why...
Which we will, which doesn't appear on the, you know, just the architectural drawings.
I mean, I like this myself. I think we agree. Let Design Review Board check a look at this, because...
Oh, they, they did see that. That was...
They saw this?
That was submitted to them, and they liked that.
But they wanted modifications?
Yes. I recall it's one member wanted modification. I remember one member saying that if I'm willing to spend the money, that I should be allowed to do it the way that I've done. And there's a very, very tall sequoia tree on the right-hand side, and that adds, that takes away a lot of the massing problems with the triangle of the, of the gable. But, you know, short of, you know, tearing the whole thing down, there are just some elements that we're going to have to live with.
That looks pretty nice to me.
That's, that is more how it's going to look than this view. I mean, houses never look like what they look like in this view. That's why I wanted to get the artist rendering, what it would look like.
Mr. Draymond?
Well, again, just to your comments, Mrs. Christensen, very compelling. For me, it's not a matter of taste. It's a matter of a question that's being posed as to which direction to go with a, with a design, and neither of them, to me, are particularly appealing options in terms of consistent design, a consistent style, one way or the other. However, that's why I prefaced my comments by saying, "Wow, these are the only two decisions, the only two choices we have." For me, it's, it's an issue of, mostly it's an issue of the roof. But in any case, putting all of that aside, the problem is, for me at this point, is you show an artist's rendering, and it's that. It's an artist's rendering. And I think it, I don't want to put words in Councilmember Friedman's mouth because she will, she'll make her own points clear, but it orchestrates for me what I think she was saying before. It's, at this point, I need something, excuse me, I had to borrow that, right? I need something more than an artist's rendering. I need, I need something that can be quantified by, I need to know what I'm voting on. That's basically it. And I think that's pretty much what you were saying a while ago. I need to know what I'm voting on. And the documents that are submitted give me a real hard time. The artist's rendering that you supplied is a different animal. I need to know what I'm voting on more than just your comment. It's going to be more like this than this. That's my problem. So, Mr. City Attorney, Mr. Weaver has suggested an option of expediting this somehow through Design Review. Is there a method to do that?
Given the willingness of the applicant to look at alternatives, this council can essentially remand, vacate the appeal and remand it back to the Design Review Board. We can have language in the motion which would, upon the submission of revised plan, be placed on the first available agenda of DRB. I think it's, is it DRB two or one that handled this, Mr. Ford?
Two.
Yeah, I thought it was two. Have it placed on the first available agenda of DRB two, if it's going to go, if it's your pleasure to remand it back to DRB two, to remand it to planning staff. That's a little bit different.
See, my confusion right now is that Mr. Jamison, Jamison? Was talking about maybe going along, you know, trying to push it to the Spanish, and then you're saying you really like the craftsman part, which is fine and great. My suggestion would be that if you, if we do send it back to the Design Review Board, not to compromise on that vision, that if you want to do something that is in the craftsman style, that you do that. The board won't have a problem with that. They, they just, you know, may make modifications in terms of some of the detailing and that sort of thing. I tend to agree with you that I think that doing the siding on the gables would be, would be a lot, you know, in a house that already on all the other sides is so simple, and you're adding so many wood elements to the front. It's starting to look to me like one section has all of this intricate detailing that none of the rest of the building has, and it's overpowering. But I would just say that you don't have to, Design Review Board doesn't, does, never tells an applicant what style they need to build in. And that's something that they've been very religious about. And they shouldn't. They shouldn't tell you what style you need to build in. All they can do is say, "If this is your chosen style," they're there to be sure that the details are consistent with that style.
Okay, let me make another comment. I do think the rocks are appropriate. And in fact, there are hundreds of thousands of Spanish homes, especially in northern Spain, that use rocks. They are basically mostly rock with very little stucco. So, it's not like rocks and Spanish design don't go together. So, I agree. I don't think the wood siding on that gable adds anything to that, to that home. But I just think tonight is not the night for us to, to make those kind of decisions. I think that's why we have DRBs, and the sooner you can get in front of one with a, with a specific plan, I think the sooner you'll, you'll be out.
I suggest get the architect to do an oblique view to scale. This is more to it than do an oblique view, or the, from a couple of different angles for the Design Review Board to look at. This looks a lot more pleasing than looking at that straight on. Whether it's stone or not, and here, the stone looks a lot better because the mass is broken up, two levels of stairs going down. Doesn't show it here.
Okay, do I have a motion or direction for...
Motion to remand it, what, to vacate the...
Mr. Mayor, members of council, the fastest way to get this back to the Design Review Board without denying the appeal and requiring them to file a new application with new fees would be to remand it to the Design Review Board based upon consideration of all documents, materials, et cetera, and after holding the public hearing. I guess some questions that staff may or may not have, and I may be putting words in their mouth, is whether you want to provide any further guidance to them, to the board, in terms of what they're going to be looking for. But if not, you can remand it back and with a requirement that the, as soon as the applicant has a modified plan, that it be placed on the agenda, at the earliest possible agenda for Design Review Board two for review.
Does that mean they don't have to pay in addition, they don't have to pay their fees again?
That's correct. It does fast-track it. And then I would also recommend that, based upon what you've heard, that you also note that the appeal of Vlad Bina is denied as he testified that the two issues on which the appeal is based have been resolved to his satisfaction.
That'd be, that'd be my motion then.
Can we do them both together?
Yes.
Both together. Mr. Draymond, did you...
I, I'm just wondering in sidebar, if we might want to ask somebody to...
Anything wrong?
Where somebody gets slugged over there, what, are we okay?
Are you okay? Yeah. The question that was raised is if the homeowners do not wish to go back to the Design Review Board, then the previous Design Review Board approval could stand with all of its conditions.
I get his point is that if they, if they decide that they, you're remanding it back, if they decide they don't, they're done, then it'll essentially convert to a denial.
Then we have to give them...
Decides they're done, the DRB?
We have to go through the conditions.
Well, you could decide that now. For example, if you remand it back to the Design Review Board and the applicant decides, "Well, we just don't want to go. We'd rather have you just deny it, and we'll either file a new application or take you to court."
Or they could have the option of...
Or build it the way...
Or, or build it consistent with the Design Review Board's original conditions.
What if we don't agree some of the Design Review Board comments or conditions? Like you said, Mr. Mayor, the additions on that they're asking for, this is accurate. I don't know why you're requesting more.
Perhaps, perhaps we can ask the applicant if their preference is to remand it back to the DRB with the proposal that they submit plans consistent with what they have heard today to be placed on the first available DRB agenda.
But you're agreeing to, yeah.
If it's, if it's, if they're agreeable with that, I don't think, I think it makes the issue of, of denying the appeal moot.
We're willing to go back and work with Design Review, but if it's, if, if we're going to have to make a lot of changes, I'll just leave the house as it is and save the money. So, you know, this, this was a stab at creating something more aesthetic, but if, if it doesn't, if it doesn't work, then we'll just leave it.
If you're willing to try. If you're willing to go back one more time, perhaps you'll be able to work it out with them and...
With our designs.
We have our answer then?
I guess the worst thing, they could appeal it back to us again.
The, the issue of denial, denial is moot. Remand it back to the Design Review, remand it back to the Design Review Board for further consideration consistent with the direction of the council.
Okay.
I'm, I'm building a, I'm building a second home, and it's in Texas, and it's pure craftsman. So, if I, if this can, you know, which is my primary home, can be made more aesthetic, fine. If not, I'm, I'm just very happy with my Texas house, so.
I, you know, I, I know that board, and I know that they're, don't see themselves as being there to stop you from beautifying your house. And I, I think that they'll work with you. And my hope is that the next time you go in, after going through all of this process, hopefully it'll be smoother, and hopefully you'll leave there feeling even better about your design than before you went there. That's my sincere hope. Thank you.
So, just to be clear, Mr. Mayor, members of council, let me recite the motion for you. Upon review and consideration of all documents, materials, and exhibits relative to the appeal of Design Review Board Case Number Two, PDR 2009-023-A, located at 1741 West Mountain Street, also known as the Design Review Case, and after having conducted a public hearing on the appeal pursuant to Glendale Municipal Code 1995, and receiving testimony of the council, the city of Glendale, based upon all the evidence in the record, hereby remands the matter back to the Design Review Board for consideration of a revised plan to be submitted by the applicant to be placed on the agenda of the Design Review, Design Review Board Number Two at the earliest possible time upon submission of that plan.
Okay, I'll close a public hearing and take a motion.
And the next paragraph should be that the appeal of Vlad Bina in the same matter is hereby denied as he testified that the two issues on which the appeal is based have been resolved to his satisfaction.
That's my motion.
Second?
Second.
Roll call. Councilmembers Draymond?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Jarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Next, please.
Next, we return to oral communication. Discussion is limited. Titles not part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to this speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. And the city manager, mayor for the matter, to the appropriate department for an investigation and a report.
All right. Anahid Pandegian, followed by Kataya, looks like Kazarian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, staff, and the audience. On behalf of Council General of Republic of Armenia, I would like to make announcement about an antique boat, sailboat, sorry, from Armenia will arrive at San Pedro Beach this coming Monday, August 24. This sailboat, which antique, made handcrafted design. This is first trip that this sailboat will arrive from Armenia to the United States. This event will be featured a variety of musical selections and dance performances, along with traditional custom dancers, which is one of the major attraction of this event. Welcome everyone to participate and enjoy this wonderful event on August 24, 6:00 p.m. evening time. You can see the rich heritage of Armenian culture and art. If you have any question, you can contact Council General at 818-265-5900. Thank you.
Thank you. Kataya, can't read your writing. Krokarian, Kazarian?
Kazarian.
Kazarian, followed by Paul Crockett.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero and council members. My name is Katya Kazarian. The purpose of my oral presentation is to discuss the issues with double parking. It seems that recently there's been an increase in careless parking, especially on the street of Orange Grove in Glendale. Drivers carelessly park there, drivers carelessly park on these streets and block entrances and exits to property, to property parking lots. These drivers violate parking, public parking, and are not cited for their mistakes. I believe these issues should be discussed to hinder any future violations. Thank you.
Thank you for your participation. And that was, what street are in...
Orange Grove in Glendale, especially.
Orange Grove and...
Yeah, like the intersection, yeah.
Do we, do we have the telephone number?
Okay.
Between what, what street?
Why don't you write your... You can leave your telephone number. We'll have somebody contact you and get some specifics on this.
Oh, mine is there? Oh, yeah.
Don't get over the yard. We'll just, we'll get the card.
Oh, okay.
Please do a little drive-by.
Okay, thank you very much for your participation, your observation, and hopefully we'll be able to settle this for you. Okay, next we have Paul Crockett, followed by Paulina Mara, Marasee, Lena Marasee.
Mayor and city council members, my name is Paul Crockett. You're keeping me up almost past my bedtime, but I hope I can stay awake. Anyway, I'm neighborhood block captain in my area at northwest Glendale, not far from this house that you've been considering. And I've had several neighbors and friends ask me about this artificial turf business that's come before in the paper I saw. So, I thought I'd do a little research. Now, I'm not a salesman or anything, but I wanted to do some research on this because maybe help you in making your decision when, when it comes up for vote or whatever it is. But I understand that it's illegal. We can go to jail if we put this in our lawns, and we're trying to conserve water. I don't know what in the world's going on in this city if they're going to do this. But anyway, I called the planning commission, who seems to be in charge of this, or are holding, holding back on allowing it to be used. And I asked them why, the reason, what the reason were. I said, "Well, hey, we have several concerns." I said, "Well, give them to me, and I'll, you know, see what I can research." Excuse me. So, they said, "Our major concern is water runoff, you know, in a heavy rain." So, I did some research. I've, I brought a piece of this turf, and it has perforation all through it for a weep hole so that water can go through and percolate down into the soil. And that shouldn't be a major concern because the, the new type of construction of this artificial turf. I said, "What is another one?" He said, "Well, we're concerned about chemical contamination." I said, "Well, that's a valid concern, but the new turf that we have now is polyethylene. It does not have any lead in it like the old turf used to have." I said, "I fertilize my lawn at least three times a year, and that puts a lot more chemicals into the soil than this would, because this has about a 30-year life expectancy, 10, 12 years guaranteed to not discolor." So, I said, "What is, is that you're only concerned?" He said, "No. Our other main..." He said, "No, our other, main, another concern is quality." And I said, "That's a valid concern. I'm concerned about that too, because I've seen the Chinese artificial turf, and it is unacceptable. But this made in America is quality. I know it's a little more expensive, but it really looks nice. I've seen it down in various yards, not in Glendale, because they'd be in jail if they were, but anyway, I've seen it down, and it looks absolutely beautiful. No water, no chemical, no fertilizer. The only people that I can see would object to this are the gardeners, because it put them out of business. But anyway, I said, "You know, the one concern that you haven't even addressed is the one that I feel," because I'm neighborhood block captain, "is what the neighbors think of it." And he said, "Well, that's true too." I said, "The neighbors, maybe their lawns don't look too good, and they might not like having a real beautiful lawn." But I said, "No, that, we're trying to beautify the City of Glendale, and trying to conserve water, and trying to help, you know, our economy with this, reducing the water consumption." So, I just wanted to present this to you. I don't know when you're going to be taking this up and voting on it, but I assume it's going to be soon, and it's maybe for your consideration that I brought a piece here that is of the good quality, and as I say, I've seen it down in some other cities, and it really looks beautiful. And I think it would be a great asset to our City of Glendale. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crockett. Pauline Marasi, followed by Anish Tomassian.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Pauline Manassi, and I am a Glendale resident. Pedestrian safety is a major issue in our hectic city. After the incident that occurred in front of Toll Middle School, our city has taken a major step, such as putting a crossguard, as well as approving the construction of a solid median on the block of Glenwood Road that is home to Capitol, Toll, and Hoover High School. I thank you all for improving the Glendale city's pedestrian safety. Besides these three schools, there are other elementary, middle, and high schools in the Glendale Unified School District, which will require the same changes, such as adding speed bumps, crossguards, and speed limit signs. I hope that you take an action into implementing my suggestion to constantly remind drivers to be aware of pedestrian safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Anish Tomassian, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. My name is Anish Tomassian, and I currently live on Western Avenue in Glendale, and many problems have occurred there. Drivers are always speeding on Western Avenue. Three people have been hit by a car because they were technically jaywalking, but they actually had no choice because the only crosswalks are on Glenox and Glenwood. I think it would be a great idea to add a crosswalk in the middle of Western Avenue to ensure the safety of the residents. In the past, the reason the city refused to put bumps there is because the fire station is located there, and the bumps would slow down the firefighters during an emergency. So, I believe a crosswalk is the best solution. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Is that something, Mr. City Manager, that we can at least look at?
We will ask traffic to look at that stretch. I suspect they already have, but we'll ask traffic to look at that stretch.
Yes, and again, just to reiterate, mid-block crosswalks are not our preference.
Yeah, right. How likely it won't be traffic horns.
Margaret Hammond, followed by Lenora Solis.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond, longtime resident, like 50 years of Glendale. Lot of changes. Big thing, the worst traffic. And the two young ladies that came forward preceding me are part of my, what I want to bring up. Three of our best-trained and competent and necessary public employees have been given pink slips. I am referring to the police officers. Here we are, a city 193 out of 194 cities' worst drivers in the nation, and this is aided and abetted by cellphone users. We are facing 30,000 state and 60,000 federal prisoners being released from the prisons to save money. And they're going to be released into our society. Make no mistake, Glendale will get their share of a lot of these criminals. And why not? LA, the police is 2.2 per thousand, Burbank 1.8, Pasadena 1.7. Guess what? Glendale is 1.2. So, why wouldn't they come here? We have less police for them to worry about. You know, remember how the West was tamed? They had to get Wyatt Earp, a gunman, a gunman who became a law officer. Will we be recruiting released prisoners for our, help us with our problems? Will the grant for pedestrian safety enable us to keep our vital police officers? How can we keep them? Should we be doing, we should be doing away with less vital expenses, such as Unity Fest, the Women's Commission employee. And, you know, citizens of Glendale, you've got to stand up. Stand up and speak up and keep our police officers. We, you know what? We don't only need to keep them, we were supposed to increase our police department. Why are we doing other things with the money? That, I think, is the biggest concern for our safety, our peace of mind, and the, protect our quality of life here in Glendale. We need our police officers. You have four men on a, on a Glendale truck, fire truck, and, who stand around, but those police officers are working. They're working night and day, and they're putting their lives on the line. And, I mean, I sure wouldn't want to be one, out there like a sitting duck to get shot at, and, I mean, these guys work hard. And I think we ought to keep, I think it's crazy to be letting trained officers go. We can get anybody in a stenographer's position or a clerk's position. How do you train the policemen? It takes a lot of money to train them, and we need them, and that's for darn sure, and I don't care what anybody says, most important. And this business of people driving with their cellphones, I see it day in and day out. I wish there was a way you could shut off the cellphones when they're inside a moving automobile. I think that might be a good way to do it. People are stupid and irresponsible, and that's why they keep knocking down pedestrians in crosswalks. They're so busy on the stupid phone, they can't concentrate on where they're driving or who's in front of them. So, and one more thing I'd like to bring up, in the future, if I wanted to get on early, do I tell somebody that I don't feel very well and I need to get out of here right away? Is that an exception that could be made for me?
It should be.
Okay, I will remember that. I sit here, and you can see what a lack of audience we have and a lack of people coming up. Mr. Drayman started it, cutting back and doing whatever to oral communication, and Mayor Quintero has added to it. We get less and less of the public, and they say, "Why would I sit there? Why? When you treat us with disrespect, not even doing it as in the past years that other mayors have respected the citizens who wanted to come and speak before city council." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Lenora Solis.
Lenora Solis, resident of Glendale. I too am here to speak about public safety during our recent campaign. We heard our incumbents and several challengers talk about how important public safety was. It was of the utmost importance. I guess they were only referring to the fire department, because in the last two years, we've cut 17 sworn police officers from our police force, and we have three more that have received pink slips. I mean, that is just really, truly unfortunate that, that we are cutting our public safety personnel in that manner. You know, one of the reasons why I got involved in helping to organize the National Night Out at Pacific Park was because we need to form, we need to empower the residents of Glendale to form more neighborhood watch groups, because here we've got a federal court order that's going to require the California Department of Corrections to release 40,000 inmates, and we've got another potential 30 that might be released from our county facilities throughout this state. Now, think of all the parolees that are going to be coming back into Glendale. We could have a serious problem. I know, I work with the LAPD as a Catholic chaplain, and I know they're already working on a parolee program, so that whenever a parolee is released back into the community, they're going to get a letter from, from the division, and they're going to have to come in and sit down and speak with some people to let them know that we're here to help you, and we're also here to watch you. So, we're going to have to really educate and empower our citizenry. I think there's a lot of people that don't realize the number of police officers that this city has lost in the last couple of years. I think it's really important that we do anything and everything possible. As I said last week, if you were to put it to some of our citizenry, who would you rather, you know, who would you rather keep? Would you rather have, you know, our employees driving around in city-owned vehicles, or some commissions that cost a lot of money? Or would you rather have another police officer? I think, hands down, you know, they will choose police. You know, our city, our city has always been known for having a very vigilant, maybe sometimes, you know, too vigilant, a police force. I know many people that I know who live in Northwest Glendale have received tickets because there's so many officers out there giving tickets right now. I think it's important, we do have a serious issue with, with safety for pedestrians and speeding vehicles, so I think that is of great importance, but I think it is important that if you're listening to this and you think it's important that we not cut our police force, you need to come down here, you need to email, you need to come here and speak, no matter what time you have to wait, come and speak about the importance of our public safety personnel. We know that the fire department is so well-represented, they wouldn't dare cut one single person from them, but unfortunately, for whatever reason, I don't understand what's wrong with the police union, why they haven't been more vigilant about speaking out about the situation. I think it's very important that we all come together as a community and do whatever we can as partners to, to secure the safety in our city. Thank you.
That ends oral communications. Any responses?
I have a question.
Mr. Drayman?
I have a couple of comments, but one is, we've let 17 sworn officers go in the last couple of years?
I think it was noted 17, not including the three that were referenced as a layoff. The actual numbers are, last fiscal year, we eliminated seven sworn positions, there were no layoffs, they were vacancies, and this year, five positions for a total of 12. Might also point out that in the past 10 years, I think you've added a total of 38 sworn positions to the department. 25 were the last major effort to increase staffing, and the cost of that has yet to be fully absorbed by the general fund. So, it's not as if the city hasn't attempted over the years to boost our numbers. It's also interesting to note, maybe somewhat ironic, we did make an application under the stimulus grant program, which has provided funding for additional police officers to various communities, and you might have read the news, many very large communities like New York and Atlanta received no funding under the program. We also made application and received no funding under the program because Glendale is too safe. I mean, literally, it's too safe to qualify for funding.
Well, the elimination of vacancies is not the same as eliminating officers. However, regardless, I say now, as I did when we were in our budget discussions, I am baffled about, about a $57 million budget for a department, and somehow, in all of that, we were not able to retain those three officers. Maybe we will. But regardless, I think part of the, part of the angst should be directed at the, at the issues related to the contract. Last time around, and this time around with the budget, we had a department head here making that recommendation. That department head, this time around as the last time around, was the chief of police. That was the recommendation brought to this council by that department head. Anyway, the other thing I wanted to, and I rarely even bite any longer, Mr. Mayor, but Margaret was particularly angry this time, and I thought I should respond to her just because she was so angry that I thought I should, again, clarify a couple of things. When my, my immediate predecessor, Mr. Najarian, was mayor and divided oral communication in half, that was a change, and the very same people said the sky was going to fall, and it was a truncation of people's constitutional rights, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. When I had my turn as mayor, I chose to move oral communications to the end of the agendized items for a very specific reason. And that reason is that what the speaker fails to recall is that your fellow citizens are speaking on all the agendized items, and consistently in four years, they've been having to wait until 10 o'clock, 11 o'clock, 12 o'clock, sometimes into the wee hours of the morning, have their opportunity to speak on a one-time basis, on one issue, such as the public hearing we had tonight, where I will bet you that, that the appellant's in that case, this may be the one and only time in their entire life, living in Glendale, they will be before council. That is their one appointed time, when it's on the agenda. Margaret, I would never take away your right to come here and speak. I agree with much of what you have to say. Sometimes we disagree. But the bottom line is, you can come here tonight, next Tuesday, the Tuesday after that, and the Tuesday after that, and the Tuesday after that, as you usually do. Those other, other people who are here on a one-time agendized item, that's their one shot at it, and I think that they deserve a council hearing their issue that is not brain-dead at 11 o'clock at night, a city staff that is advising a council that is not brain-dead because they're sitting here at 11 o'clock at night. Since we implemented those changes, the meetings, of last year's meetings, during my term anyway, just as with Councilmember Najarian's term, more than half of the meetings, more than half of the meetings, ended before 9 o'clock. And even when the meetings were ending, and we were concluding oral communications at 8:30 in the evening, Margaret, you stood before that council and bemoaned the late, late hour, and it would get eye rolling up here and chuckles from the audience. The fact that people aren't necessarily in the chamber has nothing to do, really, with the hour. It has to do with, some nights people are here because they have something to say, and some nights they aren't. And we've seen it here. When people want to talk about cellphone towers, this chamber is packed regardless of the hour. And when there's nothing to talk about, there's nothing to talk about. There are other things people are involved with. 9:30 is not a late council meeting historically for the City of Glendale, so.
Right, next, please. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
You are adjourned.